We're currently streaming.
All right, it is 7:00 and I will call the Tuesday, September 8, 2020 Scotland County Board of Commissioners meeting to order and ask Commissioner Goldston to our invocation.
I'm John, how are you? Oh, my God, I would thank you for this day and day. Thank you for all the good things you've done to take care of this coronavirus. Help us to make good decisions tonight in favor of the people of Scotland County. And these things we ask of you and me.
Thank you. You will stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute the President.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Foe like sign. All right, we will now open the meeting to public forum.
No one registered to speak at the public forum.
No one registered. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion.
Yes.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Foe like sign. Is Ms. Robley, is she going to be here tonight? Kevin?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Chairperson Davis, members of the Scotland County Board of Commissioners, good evening, and thank you for your consideration of the resolution to recognize the passage of the 19th Amendment giving women the right to vote and the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters. I am Martha Robley, I'm the unit coordinator of the Mid-Saint Hills member-at-large unit of the League of Women Voters of North Carolina, and I'm also Lauren Burke president. Joining me tonight is Jo Nickolas, who is the president of the League of Women Voters in North Carolina and Aurora County president, and also Mary Glenns, who is the chair of the 100th Anniversary Committee for the North Carolina League. Also joining me tonight is Al Robley, who's secretary of our Mid-Saint Hills male unit. Mary's committee has a slogan, "100 counties for 100 years," asking all 100 counties to join across North Carolina in support of this historical event. The League of Women Voters was founded by Perry Chapman Cat in February 201920, just six months before the 19th Amendment was ratified, giving women the right to vote after 72 years ago. Initially, the League was described as a mighty political experiment designed to help 20 million women carry out their new responsibilities as voters. From the beginning, the League has been an activist grassroots organization whose leaders believe that citizens should play a critical role in the political process. The League is a nonpartisan organization, fully committed to diversity, equality, and inclusion in principle and in practice. We'd originally planned to present this resolution to you at your August 3 monthly meeting, but unfortunately, Mother Nature had other plans for us in the form of a tropical storm. The reason why we wanted to make the presentation at your last meeting is because the month of August is very significant in the history of women's right to vote. On August 18, 1920, Tennessee, the last of the necessary 36 states, ratified the amendment. And on August 26, 1920, the 19th Amendment was formally adopted by certification by the U.S. Secretary of State. Upon its adoption, 26 million American women were enfranchised to vote in time for the 1920 U.S. presidential election. Although it is with full acknowledgement that racially motivated practices did disenfranchise black women and men until the Voting Rights Act was passed in 1965. Thank you again for your consideration of our request to pass this important resolution. We believe this action will raise awareness of the importance of voting and increase understanding that the right to vote did not come easily. Your act will provide the opportunity to enhance civic education as well as reminding all of us of the privilege we enjoy living in a democracy. I thank you. I will now turn it over to Jason Robinson, clerk of the board, to read the resolution in full. Jason?
Thanks, Martha. This is the resolution to help recognize the League of Women Voters 100th Anniversary and passage of 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, whereas in Northern Ireland, movement disenfranchised women in July 1848, in the city of Paul and New York. And whereas through the efforts of brave and courageous women referred to as suffragists who sacrificed family, their personal life, and their financial resources for the safety of youth, gave equal rights for women, especially the right to vote, were eliminated the impact of white supported women's suffrage movement, women to be being constituted or writing the voice of the people of the law, and governed them. And whereas the Women's Suffrage Movement led to the passage of the 19th Amendment to constitute the United States in 1919, their gratification by the states by the summer of 1920. And whereas the National Women's Suffrage Association involved in 1920 to create the League of Women Voters in the U.S. to register to vote and pay all voters. And whereas the League of Women Voters in North Carolina was launched on October 7, 1920, on the spot, became a courthouse by dirt, dirt, and oil, politically active and powerful, and gold burned on its line. And whereas more than 120,000 women were registered to vote in North Carolina by 1920. And whereas the state constituted the majority vote in our state, the U.S. are running for office in higher numbers and the number activity in the election process is ever before in history. And therefore, we are dissolved with the 100th anniversary of women gaining the right to vote, and founding the League of Women Voters in the United States of North Carolina, recognizing the impact these sorts of accomplishments have on citizen engagement and the city block, community, state, and the nation, and not to be this eighth day of September.
Thank you, Jason. Need a motion to adopt this resolution. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion, Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Foe like sign. Thank you, Ms. Robley.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, we will now hear from Ms. Dale Parker, Director, Board of Elections. Ms. Parker, are you with us?
She's actually, she's outside, so she'll be in in a second.
Okay.
Hello, y'all.
Hello. Good evening.
My name is Dale Parker, I'm the director for the Scotland County Board of Elections. I'm actually here just to try to give y'all updates as to what we have put in place for the upcoming election. I have brought some things to show y'all that I'm not really sure where it's been moved.
Is it me or is it Dave saying, Dale? The little voter guy?
Well, I had some notes I was going to go over. It was along with this thing right here, my hand.
I don't know.
That's okay, I'll talk to him again. Just the bring all of the speed of what we've done to try to keep our voters and our precinct officials safe for the upcoming election. We are going to have hand sanitizers as the voters walk in the entrance door. All of our precinct officials will be wearing face masks as well as face shields. We're going to claim each booth after every voter. Our precinct officials will be wearing gloves. Every voter will be given a pin. We will not be given out the "I voted" stickers this year, but the pin that they're going to get will have the words "I voted" on the pin. What we're going to basically do is we've got stickers that we're going to put all over the floor to kind of show, you know, they go. Thank you. They're going to be wearing face shields, masks as well as face shields, our precinct officials, and they will be behind a Snakes guard. These are the Snakes guards right here that we have had Mike's department to make for us. I have not pulled the plastic off of this because I'm trying to keep that from being scratched up to this point. But our workers will leave behind those. What we're going to do is we're going to place these stickers on the inside and the outside of the polling places. Inside the polling places, what we're going to do is we're going to have arrows on the floor so that we can try to get all of the voters that come to vote in person to go in one direction. We're going to actually have hand sanitizer at the entrance and at the exit doors. All seven of our precincts will be open. We are going to be offering curbside voting, but we have got some instructions from the State Board of Elections, so we're in the process of having this poster made that will be attached to the curbside sign that is outside. Basically, what this poster says is that if they're unable to enter into the voting enclosure due to a physical or disability or age disability, they can vote curbside. But curbside is not going to be available for someone just because they have the fear that they're going to contract COVID-19. So if they are able to enter into the voting enclosure, then they're going to be expected to come into the voting enclosure to vote. We're also, after every individual voter, we're going to claim the polling booth before the next voter can go against that booth. Here in Scotland County, we've been very fortunate, we haven't had to deal with lines, but we may have a few lines this year because we're going to do everything in our power to practice the six-foot social dissonance requirement. We're going to have masks that we're going to offer to the voters, and we're going to highly encourage those voters to wear a mask, but we cannot demand the voters to wear a mask. We can have that, we will give to them if they want one, but we can't disenfranchise them because they're refusing to wear the mask. Just so that y'all are aware, we've been really busy. There's three different groups, a couple of them in North Carolina, one of them's actually in Washington, D.C. They're sending out the absentee ballot request form, and the problem is, is they're not working together, so citizens in our county are getting multiple request forms. Well, the problem is, is they're not just filling out one form, they're filling out every request form that they get. So when we receive it in our office, we're having to process them even though that they're duplicates. But our system catches that it is a duplicate so that they only will be mailed one ballot. Now, the problem is, is that some citizens in our county has got the idea that they are only going to be able to vote voluntarily, and that is not the case. All seven of our precincts will be open on election day. We are going to have one-stop early voting. One-stop early voting will be in the location where it's always been at the Scotland County Annex Building. Our hours are going to be 8:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. each weekday. We do have two Saturdays in there, and we have a Sunday in there. So we are offering a total of 165 hours of early voting on top of all seven precincts being open from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. on election day. There is going to be two polling place changes because of this election because we need the social dissonance space. So over in Washington Park, we're normally at the Housing Authorities Building. Well, for this upcoming election, we're just going to move right across the street to the Scottish Hall, which is kind of joins the parking lot of the First Methodist Church. It's a bigger building, and it gives us an opportunity to be able to get our booths, you know, the six feet apart that we've got to be apart. Not only do we have to be the six feet apart, but you also got to leave walking space so that when the voters walk by, that six feet is still there. The other precinct change is going to be in Laurel Hill, which y'all are aware of, you know, what's going on in Laurel Hill. We're just going to move right up the road. We're going to be using the Fellowship Hall of the First Methodist Church.
Laurel Hill United Methodist.
Laurel Hill United Methodist Church, and it's not even a half a mile from where the old precinct was. So the voters from the Washington Park area as well as the Laurel Hill area will receive a voter party of the mail updating them of the changes. In reference to absentee by mail, we started mailing ballots on Friday. We've already mailed all of the overseas and the military, and now we're working on the civilians. And as of today, we're already processed 1,302 absentee by mail ballots. We are putting a lot of stuff in the place for the upcoming election to try to keep everybody safe. At this point, just so that y'all are aware, none of this has been county funds of any of the purchases that we've made. There was a bill passed and the Elections Office was giving a CARES Act, some funds to the CARES Act. So everything that we have done up to this point, we've done via the CARES Act fund. Scotland County was awarded $68,895 on the CARES Act and decided to help our finance department out instead of us requesting the whole $68,000 to be sent to Scotland County. Because if you do it that way, then our finance department would have to do monthly reports to the state. So after talking with this house, what we thought would be best for us is we set up a line item in the election budget for the expenditures. And what we're doing is we're putting everything against that one line item, and then we're sending the invoices to the state, and the state's reimbursing us on everything except for the sales tax. On top of that, we did purchase thermometers. We cannot do this for the voters, but we will be checking all of our precinct officials to make sure that before the day starts that they're not coming in with a temperature, you know, that kind of thing. At this point, we have all the precinct officials that we need, but that's at this point. We don't know what's going to happen between now and election day, so we do have some precinct officials that we've got on a standby status just in case we need to send somebody home and kill somebody here. And reference to one stop, it's one stop 17 days. What we've done for one stop is we're going to have an A-team and a B-team. And we're going to work the A-team first. That way, we've got the B-team, if we need to send the A-team home, have the one-stop locations sanitized, and then bring the B-team, fill in the spots. Our plan at this point is that we have already purchased the sprayer as well as the chemical that is needed. So we're going to have all of our precincts sprayed before the Monday, before the election, and then when we come out of the precincts, we'll have those same precincts sprayed in on that Wednesday. So it's clean before we go in, and then it'll be clean when we come out. And I think that's all I have, not unless y'all may have some questions for me. Yes, ma'am.
If someone, say for instance, your staff for the voting, said you're ready to vote, comes down with coronavirus, do you have, do we have to shut down that particular?
We would have to shut down the Annex Conference Room, but we've got this room here on hold as a standby. So what we would do is we would shut down the Annex Conference Room, we would inform everybody, and we would move here just long enough to get the Annex Conference Room sprayed. And what we're also doing at the Annex Conference Room, just so y'all are aware, instead of just using the conference room, we're also using the next door of Corporate Extension's kitchen. That way, we're going to have the voters to come in one door, and we're having them to go out a different door so that they don't have to meet each other in the process of coming in and going out.
If you address poll workers, I'm assuming there'll be no poll workers as in the past.
Well, when you say poll workers, do you mean the people outside?
Yeah, outside, coaching folks.
The electioneers do not work for the Board of Elections. The electioneers work for the candidates. We do have to set up that electioneering area, general statutes require us to do that. We have no control of who's out there. Anybody that is hiring electioneers and putting people in those areas, I would recommend that you do ask them to do a social dissonance, that you do ask them to wear face covers because some voters will stop and talk to those people in that electioneering area before they come into the precincts to vote. And anything that we can do prior to to keep our workers safe, we definitely want to encourage.
Thank you. Any more questions, Dale? Thank you, Dale.
I appreciate y'all's time. I'm going to leave that Snakes guard there, and I'll just get that in the morning. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Dale. We appreciate it.
But it looks like you may be.
Yes, we will.
That is all right. Have a great night.
All right, then, we will now go into a closed session pursuant to North Carolina's General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body in litigation of Owen versus Scotland County.
In the motion, is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Salute.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Foe like sign.
Kind of ripped right now, he is not here.
No, he's, he's not feeling well. I guess we'll go to.
I'm going to hear from him tonight.
Hold on, we'll see if we find out.
Okay.
I don't matter. I think we're going to allow 30 minutes for those that are for, 30 minutes for those that are against.
30 minutes, we're at like 3 minutes.
I'm having a little bit.
We've got to find out how we can, how we can speak.
Yeah.
Just clarify, we're going to do the against list first, after?
After, after staff recommendation, we'll have representative from Garrison Command speak, and then we will call in against, then for. Are we ready for sound? Yes, well, with this, the board passed last month rules on the.
This conference will now be recorded. This conference is no longer being recorded.
Rules passed on the public hearing for the text amendment. Just really quickly go over those with this. In the rule that people were expected to sign up in advance for the, with the clerk, we did have, we did have people registered at the bit, at the building who were taking registrations up till now. Both sides would be given an opportunity, an equal, an opportunity to speak to up to 30 minutes, generally conceding up to three minutes per person. One person who is, someone who is in attendance could yield their time to another person. So if there is a group, they could choose a representative and allocate time to that point. But at that point, but of course, this is up to the chairman's, chairman's option, but those in favor and those against would have 30 minutes of time total.
I think we want to give everybody that wants to speak an opportunity to speak, but at the same time, I don't want to see 15 people talking the same thing from the same group. Like the homeowners association, for example, I would think that they would have maybe one representative to speak for them as opposed to a dozen. I don't know that, but that would be my recommendation.
But they don't have a 30 minutes each, right? Going against, right? So we've got to keep track of the minutes.
Who's going to keep the time?
Keep the time.
Lady right in the corner, she's going to keep the time for each person?
Lady down there.
We, we do have, and she's our children's librarian, so we have, at the beginning of the meeting, we did have nine people who were registered to speak in opposition. We had four people in, registered to speak in favor of the meeting. So I'm assuming to start with, we do with the staff recommendation. We have Chad Essex, who's our county, hired as county attorney to provide legal service on this, as well as Sam Cribb, chairman of the zoning board here.
Well, if you had nine to sign up for it, then give them three minutes each.
Yes, sir.
That would be my, my agreement with everybody.
Did anybody sign up since they got here for the meeting? Or did we allow them?
We allowed it until we went to, basically until closed session. I'll just confirm if there's, if there is a tenth member who signed up.
Are we ready?
Well, yeah.
Are we ready for this gentleman to speak?
Yes, sir.
We're going to put off the vote until next meeting day, right?
Yes, sir.
Jason, did they have to take it out?
No.
No, this is just a fucking here to talk.
We made a plan of all that, and recommended the board commission considering corporate wanted to power the revision to propose text amendment. Three revisions, you agree with the R and 1, 2, and 3?
The revisions were in your packet.
I'm going to review them in part of my presentation, but then, Sam, do they have any questions about anything else the planning board considered?
What's he doing?
They're just going to go with the recommendation. They're just going to go with the recommendation from his own.
It's all the same. Sam, I apologize, but I don't understand. Increase the height requirement of the bulletproof textile, did you give a recommendation, recommended height requirement?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Let's get any.
And then, and then decrease the structure of, get it on a 100 piece, get it on a 100 piece.
I don't have a copy of it.
The structure height for this.
I don't have a copy of it.
No, it's in your agenda packet. It's in the agenda packet.
If, 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 okay, if we have a question, we can make, may I have a question?
This here?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thanks, sir. Again, my name is Chad Essex, I'm a fellow of the school and serve as outside counsel to the county and have been working with the staff and the county attorney regarding this proposed section. Let me start by saying, over the past few months, the staff have identified the need to define and to provide defined uses related to training activities and to place them in zoning districts and provide for more objective requirements governing those uses. Generally, the initial draft of the text change, let me just start at a high level and then we can get granular to these, but the, so there's two types of training facilities under this text change. You have combat training facilities, you have tactical training facilities, and both of those uses are defined. The more intense use, which is a combat training facility. The more intense use, which is a combat training facility, uh, would only be allowed in the heavy industrial zoning district if required to be issued with a conditional use permit. The lesser intense use, which is a tactical training facility, would be allowed without a conditional use permit in all commercial and industrial zoning districts. That would include neighborhood commercial, highway commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial, but would be subject to certain objective standards that regulate the minimum acreage that has to be on site, setbacks from property lines, certain buffering requirements, certain noise limitations, which I'll get into more detail in just a second. Um, so, as I said, a draft of this was presented to planning and zoning board at its July 15th meeting. The board agreed to initiate it and authorize its review at the July 29th meeting. At the July 29th meeting, uh, they did consider it and, um, do, and they made a recommendation to the commissioners for approval, although there were some technical difficulties that night relating to audio of those who were trying to listen in, uh, and so, and there was some concerns expressed about, uh, not having the opportunity to speak and provide a public comment on that. So, as a result, we, uh, we decided to bring it back to the planning and zoning board at its regular meeting in October, October 19th, uh, and we allow for written comments to be submitted, uh, to be submitted to the planning board and with their planning packets prior to the meeting. So, uh, as Mr. Cribb noted, uh, this was reviewed at the, at the planning and zoning board's August 19th meeting, and they provided their recommend, written recommend, written recommendation, uh, which is included in your packet under, uh, I believe, the right of the attachment one, which I think Mr. Cribb referring to, if you guys are looking at. Uh, so as a part of that written recommendation, they, uh, recommended that the text change be approved, but that the county commissioners considered one following revisions, that tactical training facility be removed from the list of permitted uses by rights in the neighborhood commercial that they require, or that you require issuance of a conditional use permit for that use in the neighborhood commercial district, or that you consider adding some additional regulations, uh, if that use is gonna be allowed in the neighborhood commercial district. They also had some other recommendations as they're outlined in that recommendation regarding, that you just mentioned, Mr. Gibson, regarding the height of, uh, the backstop of the combat training facility, structure height for both uses, further definition of some of the buffer requirements, and some annual reporting as it relates to the number of days that the use is operated for tactical training facilities. So, and just to back up, just so, uh, and I want to talk about, we have incorporated some of, uh, the recommendations in a revised text change that was in your packet under attachment two, uh, and I'll go over this in just a second, but before I do, I just want to, um, go back. So, as it relates to the differences between the two uses, so the combat training facility is a use that has live fire. It's a milit-, it's an intense use with live fire, can be operated 365 days a year, uh, and it's more military training type activities, um, as defined in that use. That's why we kept that, that's why staff proposed keeping that as a conditional use in the heavy industrial zoning district. Tactical training facilities, however, are, um, less intense, there is not live fire, not live, not live ammunition that are fired, uh, as defined. It can only be operated 180 days out of the year, uh, so essentially half the year, and of those, only 60 of those days can you have simulated fire. Uh, so, you're, you're putting limitations on, uh, objective limitations that staff can enforce on that use, you're not allowing the live ammunition. In addition, in the tactical training facility, uh, objective requirements, uh, there's certain decibel limitations that have to be observed at the property line of 80 decibels. Uh, so those are some of the things that, and there's a minimum 30 acre requirements for both, for both of those uses. So, those were some of the things that were part of the initial text change. Looking at the changes that were made, uh, after the planning and zoning board made its recommendation, uh, under attachment two, um, I'll just run through this quickly, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions. One of the things that was clarified in the text change was that, uh, for both uses, is that the, uh, any sort of either live fire in the combat training facility or any simulated fire, uh, must be only, done by only by law enforcement, military, or federal agency groups, contractors, or agents working on behalf of them. So, there were some comments that came out about, you know, can militia groups go up and set these things up, and so, wanted to address that comment, that, that we're talking about folks that are working with law enforcement, uh, you know, uh, military groups or federal agency groups. Um, and that's for both uses. Uh, in the combat training facilities and the objective requirements, you'll look under, uh, subsection of 14A11, we've, and we've done this in both, uh, in both of the, uh, the uses, it was language that said, "To the extent practical, you should, you should, uh, retain existing vegetation within the first hundred foot of the perimeter." And we've, we've tightened that up to say, you know, any vegetation that's within that area, uh, is to be maintained so that you keep, if you have a nice, healthy tree system or good buffer that's there, it's within that first hundred feet, it should be retained and kept. Um, in addition, uh, we've made some clarifying changes on, um, on the buffering, where we're in the combat training facilities, um, you would have a minimum 100-foot wide dense evergreen vegetated buffer along the perimeter of the property to create a visible, a reasonable visual screen. That was not a part of the tactical training facility, but you'll see that was added in subsection B of the 14A21, so that tactical training facilities also, uh, would have a 100-foot wide dense evergreen vegetated buffer along the property lines, uh, for anything containing existing residential, commercial, or industrial uses. So, that was added, uh, to the objective requirements that would have to be satisfied by someone operating in a tactical training facility. Um, you will see that in both of the regulations for both, uh, uses, uh, the building structure heights was reduced from 100 feet to 50 feet, uh, and that was, again, part of some of the comments that were in, in recommendations that came. There was some, uh, comments that came in about not having any, uh, firing activities, whether it's live fire or simulated fire on certain holidays, so that was added, uh, to, to both uses. We also added in subsection J for tactical training facilities, we added, uh, an annual report that must be filed, must be filed with the county, uh, to ensure that the facility is meeting its requirements to only operate no more than 180 days, and again, making sure that no more than 60 of those days there's any simulated, uh, fire for the tactical training facilities. Um, so, those are some of the changes that were incorporated, uh, to the, uh, to the, to the text change that's before you this evening. Let me talk briefly, um, about, um, the reason why, from SaaS perspective, uh, requiring a conditional use permit in, for the more intense use in a heavy industrial district, as opposed to allowing the use with certain, these objective standards, uh, in the other , uh, commercial and industrial zoning districts. Um, you know, staff believes that this less intense use that is operated less number of days a year, it doesn't have live ammunition that is being fired. If you are setting objective standards that apply, that staff can enforce, like a 30-acre minimum requirement, vegetated buffers, uh, noise requirements, uh, like we have done in this, it makes it easier for staff to administer the ordinance, it makes folks looking to invest in Scotland County and to bring facilities here to understand what the requirements are, and whether or not they can meet them, and not have to go through what can be, uh, a very long and arduous conditional use permitting process if you can capture some of the big, uh, mitigation things, and in the case of a tactical training facility where you don't have live fire, you don't have bullets flying, and you don't, you don't have, uh, it operating potentially every single day of the year, that type of use can be mitigated through some objective standards that are applied and that would apply, uh, at the, at the permitting level. Um, I will say that there was some, I read some of the comments that were provided to the board in advance of the public hearing, uh, referring to other ordinances, uh, that still, uh, the comment was that it looked at 50 counties, that's half the counties in North Carolina, and found five that had fine and regulated these uses, uh, and indicated that all of them required a conditional use permit or a special use permit, same thing, same permit. Um, I looked at those, one of them, the 80 county actually does not require a conditional use permit, a special use permit. They have objective requirements that they have, uh, and, uh, I will note that this proposed text change seemed to be in line with those as far as the minimum acreage. We were actually a little higher than some, some had 25 as a minimum acreage, others had some in the 40 range. But I will say that none of those ordinances looked at, hey, what are these, they've had it all under one use, so they were dealing with live fire situations in those ordinances where they were regulating real bullets coming out of guns and being shot on property. So they, they didn't look at, okay, are there two different types of uses here where we're talking about? We're talking about uses that, again, have live fire or operating potentially every day of the year, or we're looking at something less intense that's operating a fraction of the year that has not live fire, and, uh, treating them perhaps differently in where they go and in what areas they can be placed in and what regulations are. So, that's what this ta-, text change has attempted to do, um, and looked at, um, you know, trying to put objective standards in place that provide buffering, noise reduction, um, you know, uh, minimum acreage requirements. So, it's just a, one point I will make is that the, um, staff did an analysis looking at, how many parcels are we talking about right now that are 30 acres in zone highway commercial, neighborhood commercial, or light industrial? Identified nine parcels. Uh, and I, and I'm happy to, I put a summary in your staff report, happily answer it, and Kevin can help review this if we need to go to more detail, and I think it was a, a, as it showed you where they were, but the point of that is that... If somebody wants to do one of these, so there's only nine properties right now where that could even be darned, at least the minimum acreage requirements in those three districts. If somebody comes to the county or commissioners and wants to rezone 30 acres or more land to one of those districts, you will have the opportunity at that point to say, whoa, 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 this use is allowed, we don't think it's an appropriate use here, and so we don't think this, you know, you will have a point at that point to evaluate whether or not you think that piece of parcel should be rezoned to one of these districts in light of the uses that are allowed, like you do with every rezoning, that you look at, because you have general use rezoning, you look at the rezoning and say, okay, here are all the potential uses that could be done, is this appropriate in this zoning district? So, uh, you know, the notion, or any notion that, you know, this is gonna have live, you know, we're gonna open up the whole county to these potential facilities without getting a conditional use permit, uh, I don't think it's a fair characterization, given, um, the, the limited number of properties that currently even need those minimum acreage requirements in our zone, those commercial or industrial zoning districts. So, um, and I will say, I did, I see a comment that we, while staff did look at those three zoning districts for how many there were, we didn't look at the heavy industrial zoning district. And my comment to that would be, if heavy industrial is where you want to, is where you have your most intense uses, heavy industrial is, um, um, again, presumed to be where, where you put most of it, that's understood by the airport and that area, and so, you know, we didn't do an analysis of how many heavy industrial parcels are over 30 acres, certainly through that, the commissioner would like that information, but, uh, the point was that, that we're looking at where these other districts and where they are, how big they are, and how, how many would meet these minimum requirements to even qualify for these facilities. So, um, again, with that, I'm happy to, uh, to answer any questions, um, that, that the board has, um, or actually, uh, reserved questions for, if you want to ask me some questions after you hear the public comment, I'd do that as well.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Who determines this 160 days? The government? Uh, the company that's contracted with government? How can they determine what the sound would do if they're, if they're combat somewhere and they needed to run off the clock? Would they, the government, forthright, comply with a preposition of agreement of a certain number of days?
If I might, if it is, uh, a military operation, uh, army who are out in Camp McCall on a daily basis out in the game lands, this ordinance does not apply to a direct military operation, period. This applies to a contractor who is providing services to military or some other federal agency, uh, through a contract.
Okay, through a contract, but if they're doing it for the, it's gonna be from the military?
Yes.
If they needed more than that, who determines?
They would have to come back and request a variance to achieve that.
Second thing is, I, in the last year, I experienced one of the training without live ammunition. And the soldiers came out of the woods and they took, they killed us at the facility that's up there now. And I can tell you, everything they used, I can tell if it was live or not live, it was a noise that made it. They were throwing things, shooting, and it wasn't live, but I don't think live would have been anymore, uh, louder. It was loud, so, so when they say, "Whoever it is," they're saying they won't be using live ammunition, that doesn't mean it's not loud. I mean, it's terrifying, and, and, you know, uh, there was like six different tactics they used at the same time. There were explosions going on, and gunfire, I mean, I just want to say that, I witnessed that. I'm not trying to influence anybody here, I'm just saying what I witnessed.
Normally though, Chad, and you can speak to this, I guess, blanks are normally not as loud as regular...
Well, I'm no expert, but I, I mean, and the folks from the industry will be here, I know the folks from, some of the industry folks will be here to speak. My understanding, uh, from having spoken with folks in the industry is that the blanks are not as loud as live ammunition.
I mean, that's what I've always heard.
Hopefully they can address why, or if that's the case or not. I think the point is, uh, at least from our, from a policy standpoint, the text change is, that's the reason that we're saying you can't go over 80 decibels at the property line, and if you do, you're gonna get a zoning, notice of zoning violation and be in zoning, in zoning violation. So, you're gonna have to come into, you're gonna figure out how to make your facility operate in a way that's gonna stay below those noise thresholds, in addition to the buffering requirements that help mitigate that, of course, as well as the minimum acreage size, so you have a bigger parcel of land, you're not doing it all on one small parcel. So, I think, again, the objective requirements for that tactical training facility that we built into the text change are attempting to address that, address that issue, and, um, you know, I, I read, I think I read some of the comments, I think that even a lot of that will be complaint-driven, there me, therefore means it won't be enforced. I would submit that if there's no complaints, that's a good thing, and if there's no complaints, then probably that need to be a lot of enforcement. So I think all zoning is, um, you know, in my experience, all zoning is gonna be complaint-driven. So, um, you know, I think that's something for, you know, the board to consider if they consider this text change.
I think I read somewhere that, uh, this 80 decibels was about like a lawnmower cutting grass, I mean, that's, I've read that in some of this.
Your report, they have to do on the training, who gets that report, Kell? I mean...
So, the, the language that we've added, and of course, we can, the way we have it written now, you have an annual report that the facility operated would, would file with the county by January 31st, indicating how many days that, that year they were operating, how many days that they used the blank ammunition, firearms, or similar equipment. So, demonstrating, that could certainly be under penalty of perjury or however we want to do it, uh, to say, uh, you gotta report, I mean, they keep track of those sort of things, and that they report it, so that we in the county does, uh, that, that they're staying under those thresholds that we've established. So that's, that's the reason, that was the comment that came out of the, some of the comments of the planning boards, we added that, that language in here.
You, you added that to the tactical, you didn't add it to combat?
And the reason for that is that combat doesn't have any limitations, and that's, so combat facilities can operate as many days as they want to.
They don't have, they don't have any...
Right. And that's part of, another reason, part of the, they've remained a conditional use in the heavy industrial district among the live ammunition and some of the other types of operations.
And another question, I think, and Sam, Sam, this may be to you, and you may have answered that, in your, in your first set of three recommendations, one was that you remove tactical training from the list of uses permitted by rights in a neighborhood commercial zoning.
We didn't do that one, that's not the recommendation. The second one is require additional use permit for the neighborhood commercials. We didn't do that. Add additional regulations, tactical training, located by rights on neighborhood, that's what, that's one of those additional things that you're saying, D.
Yes, sir. So that, we, we, we took those three options, I guess you would call them menu options, that the, the planning board recommended to the commissioners considering, and staff looked at it, and we said, okay, we, we're gonna look at this third option and ask... And staff looked at it and we said, okay, we're going to look at this third option and ask for additional regulations. And that's with evergreen buffering, the 100-foot evergreen buffering, the reduction of the height, and those sorts of things were added and reporting and that sort of thing.
And Sam, I apologize for doing this way, I do it here. Are you okay with that style?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure, my point on this is, this amendment, we could be doing this amendment, that lawsuit, if anybody's getting upset about this, that's what's coming to the government. This amendment to this county department, serve us on full regardless of whether 669 lines here or we have something here to mount. We'll build similar training facilities, no questions. But this is strengthening our planning and ability to target and regulate these policies.
I think that, I think that's fair. I think, yes, I think that if given.
While we're here, but while we're here, we're also accomplishing objectives that we committed to this time to regulate these policies. I just want to make that count. On objective requirements, I understand how they sort of, that actually are stronger in some respect in this review permit becomes more specific.
Yes, I think, you know, I think the conditional use permitting process is one that you go through and you have to industry compliant with certain subjective requirements.
And permit is for.
For permit, and you may put conditions on it, you may not. So some of these may be a part of it, it may not. So I think these objective requirements put a kind of baseline of requirements that staff can do at the site plan stage, put some regulations on it. And then those looking to, like I said, invest in Scotland County, given their proximity to military installation, can look at your ordinance and say, okay, I gotta, I can only operate this number of days. I gotta, I gotta figure out how I can beat my decibels at 80, 80 decibels at the property line. I gotta put these buffers in, I gotta set my buildings back this far. I know what I have to do and can make an assessment of whether or not I can do it.
Great, you mean for.
It's.
And it stated that there's only three or four of the office landsites that has to bring on the same. I'd be going there, so what we talk about, or they'll, three, this is three of them, I mean, it was, it's, it really has a, actually. Well, what if somebody is getting next year?
Yep. So, so again, staff looked at it, there are nine total parcels. Yeah, nine, nine total parcels that need 30 acre requirements. And that are currently zoned neighborhood commercial, highway commercial, or light industrial. Of those nine facilities, two have, two have existing solar farms. One of them is probably that manufactures, manufacturer homes, has some surrounding vacant land to it. One is the facility that we're, that has got so much discussion. And then there's some remaining property on Highway 74 on Gibson Road. You should have aerials of all these properties that are in packets. But yeah, so, and one I think has an asphalt plant operated by Hudson Paving. So, yeah, so the point of giving you that information is to say that if somebody's going to come do one of these facilities in those rezoning districts in future, likely it's going to require a rezoning that has to come forth forward. And they're going to have, you're, you're going to have to make the decision at that time, is this property that what they want to rezone the 30 or more acres to those, to one of those districts? Is it appropriate for this type of use? Could it be a potential use subject to those standards that we have in fiction?
Of those eight or nine you mentioned, there's only, what, about five that's available really for that? Because of, like you mentioned, the asphalt plant and two or three solar farms and.
Three, might as well, two or three that are truly like vacant sites. Don't have any existing development on, and they force it, something to redevelop.
Anyone have any more questions for Chair or Sam? Sam, thank you.
Sam, are you going to sit around though, or is that something else?
We can find it if we need.
The next person is Justin Mitchell, Deputy Garrison Commander for Fort Bragg.
Well, folks, I'm going to be the briefest speaker tonight probably. And so I just, I just wanted to come and Chairman, members of the board, I just wanted to come and say thank you to Scotland County for being a great neighbor of this board. We're considering Fort Bragg and our, you know, requirements as you go forward and do your business. I love this invocation, we're talking about making good decisions. That was spot on, I pray the same prayer every day when I go to work. So, you know, Fort Bragg is the fifth largest city in North Carolina and on behalf of 52,000 plus service members, 12,000 plus deployed right now to over 31 countries, we just wanted to come say thank you for being great neighbors. And we have tried to be great neighbors as well and work with you all. When you all sent us the letter about this, it got our attention because whenever we talked about bumper zones or, or things that, that come close to Fort Bragg, my mind goes to encroachments, but you folks, actually, know what's saying, hey, we're trying to be your partner, are you interested? I'm here to listen because we're interested. And I had some great conversations with your team. And what I want to basically do is just come say, the five counties that never Fort Bragg, we appreciate you folks very much for your consideration of our service members and what we have to do. But God bless you all, have a good evening.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
So we're going with the.
Against.
Against now? How much time do they have?
How many during the hour?
Three minutes?
Was the current limit, or was the current count?
Nine.
Still three minutes.
Once they get to the phone, three minutes?
Yes.
She'll raise her hand when the timer's off. Jerry Stanton?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jerry Stanton. My husband and I have the Deercroft subdivision in Scotland County for the past 12 years. We shared concerns of many other Deercroft property owners, whom I represent as the president of the Board of Directors for the Deercroft Communities Association. Deercroft Communities Association Board has a duty to look after the interests of members of our Deercroft community. We represent a total of approximately 530 properties, owners and approximately 260 residents and families. We continue to grow. We all have a vested interest in trying to prevent actions that could have a negative impact on our quality of life, environment, and property values. Combined tax values for our Deercroft properties, including golf course, is total tax value 52,280,820 dollars. This information was extracted from the Scotland County GIS website. As you are aware, Deercroft is a major source of revenue that is contributing to the county's survival. Members of Deercroft community want to work with the county commissioners to ensure that any action you take does not decrease property values in Scotland County. This process of pushing the proposed zoning amendment forward is moving too fast and is not at the best interest of our county. I believe all residents of the county should be given the opportunity to hear all the facts about the changes that the zoning commission plans to make and should be given the opportunity to voice our opinions. Please listen to your constituents and slow this down. Do not vote to enact this change in the zoning ordinance until more information is provided to all Scotland County residents and we are given the chance to provide input. Dr. Sarah Simmons, a member of Deercroft Communities Association Board, will share with you the ways in which we believe we can work productively together to do what is best for Scotland County citizens. And I would like to relinquish the rest of my three minutes to Ms. Dr. Simmons. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Sarah Collins Simmons. My husband Mitch and I grew up in Morgueburg. We are 25-year residents of the Deercroft community, where I was director of, I'm not in force. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed amendment to zoning ordinance related to tactical and combat training facilities. From the September of the fourth letter to the Deercroft HLA, I'm a panel meeting man in for Kevin Patterson. I became aware that there may be more, a more recent version of the proposal that incorporates recommendations from the zoning board, but it has not been made public. Therefore, the validity of this hearing to be called a question, one may ask, how can you hold a public hearing on a proposal that is not being made public? However, since you've chosen to continue with this hearing, I will speak on behalf of the Deercroft community to reiterate some of our concerns. Deercroft collected approximately 125 signatures on a petition in opposition to the proposed amendment. You have a copy of that petition. However, this is true as much broader than the Deercroft community. Any proposed zoning ordinance in yet, will clearly have far reaching and long lasting implications for all Scotland County property owners and could have an adverse effect on our quality of life, climate, and property value. Obviously, any citizens who are unaware of this issue, or I suspect there would be more people here tomorrow. As you consider any proposed amendment, we have repeatedly suggested for five. Number one, retaining section 16.4 of the existing ordinance that deals with offers. Number two, limit both tactical and combat facilities to areas designated as heavy industrial. Number three, require conditional use permit for both types of facilities. And number four, specify about valid needs that are reached while by county personnel and ensure compliance. In addition, we do issue to package careful and thoughtful coverage, ensuring that affected property owners receive individual and timely notification of proposed zoning changes, providing opportunities for citizen entry and eliminating the bitterness of such facilities that we can't and its citizens, such as taxes and jobs. You were elected to look out for the best interest of county citizens. We urge you to allow the county necessarily to ensure that any changes to existing orders are the result of the expansion and transformation of the city. How do you view your municipal concerns?
Thank you, ma'am.
Grease, what a great example of democracy in action. People out here in COVID, standing in the rain waiting to speak, waiting to be heard. That's not, you guys have a hard job, and I don't always agree with it, but I respect it, and I know you all are acting facetiously. Cam, I laid out pretty much everything I wanted to say in the letter. I'm here representing Rick, who was his wife, who are involved with this. And also, speaking on behalf, I've been here 30 years and then grew up here before that. And just a couple of points, it's real simple. I'm in favor of military training. I participate in military training, my boys got through that. My son came home and told his mom, now he got a shot. But I can tell you this, when it's squad automatic weapon fires rapid fire blanks, it's really loud. My information is 180 decibels. Concussion grenade, similar grenade, they're loud. We're in favor of military training, we just want it to be done in a way that takes into consideration the neighbors and gives them a chance to have some input. Simple solution, retain the conditional use permit. You retain a conditional use permit requirement, the neighbors will be able to have input, everybody will be in the same page. They'll know, and then you make the important decision. And I think you all have conditional use permit even in the heavy industrial. Because what if vibrations or a sudden bang stalls up? Man working on a lathe in a machine shop causes a process. I think they all have some input as well. It's a, it's an unusual use and it shouldn't be allowed as a right anywhere. The county, you got smart people here, you can figure out the right ways to govern, right conditions to put. You know, if it's live grounds, you can put a requirement of remediation plan, get up and lay it. Also, just want to mention a couple of things. I know your staff worked hard trying to identify places where this could happen. But I've been writing the law 30 years and I've never seen a comprehensive zoning map in Scotland County. So there's no way to really kind of double shape behind them right now. And, you know, they may be absolutely right about this thing, as attorneys, we can't do that. We don't have that ability. Such a, your current process works. Griffin Brooks had a hearing that got a conditional use permit, there's no problem. Every other county pretty much that we were able to do, sorry if we missed Canada 1, but we didn't have a whole lot of time to do all these reviews out there. But, you know, if everybody else requires some kind of permitting process and public's input, this is a big deal. We want to support the troops, we want to support the military and the police, but let's do it in a way that respects the neighbors and gives the neighbors some. You said this, thank y'all again, we really appreciate what you do for the county and other tribal actions that you do.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for your time. My name is Rick Owens. Recently we got a slight circle of people in this county. The wife of him coming down this area for, oh, she's been 25 years, come along the house several times. Searched for a long time to find this piece of property, finally did. And now I find out that they want to put in a training facility next door. I'm all for a training facility. I think our request, we should have the best facility possible. However, it comes to noise pollution. And a 556 shell, these are both empty parts, just one part is blank, one part is a live ground. They contain the same amount of power. It's this noise that's the issue. I understand from, they'll be blowing charges long enough or hard enough to take a door off the hinges. The sole purpose of the training, the research I've been able to do is to walk into a facility, shake hands, make friends, win their favor, but it doesn't always go that way. Sometimes they have to take efforts, action, reach a door, clear a village. That's why they're going to have four, four different local separate villages that they building the piece. This is per DDCS own admission in their zoning permit request back in, whenever it was. It's hard to remove a door from hinges. I mean, granted it's simulated exploded. Are you going to remove the doors or hinges unless it actively goes? There's no projectile, there's not really any danger. But as far as you heard a lot of words about blanks, a blank makes the same noise as the other, so do the charges. That I'm well aware of. As far as decibel level, I would challenge each one of you, I'm sure they had a copy for you. A long rifle puts out decibels of 140, 150 decibels. Granted, it's supposed to be 80 at the property line, and there's a distance. I am 1,200 feet from this place. Let's move on to economics. On their own admission, they'll have play actors speaking in their native language, et cetera. So as far as jobs, the guy at the maintenance house, the one mowing the yard, the one put the doors back on the hinges, yeah, that could be anybody. Someone answering the phone could be anybody. But unless you have a specific, specific skill set, moving in one language, it's no dialect there, have knowledge of clerics and so forth. To be a play actor, I don't know how many people in Scotland County would qualify for that kind of job. As far as property taxes, yeah, the property taxes will go up and that Scotland County's going to enter a pocket, I can see that. But I don't know how much it's going to go up when you're building, building out plywood and blowing them up and putting them back together. Eight-story, 10-story hotel, I can see some of them. And the last thing. And the last thing, to remove conditional use permit, to remove buffer even in combat zones, this was proposed. There was language in Scotland County's books already that called for a conditional use permit. Called for a little more specific for combat training. The DDCI applied for this. They were denied in the letter, Mark 6, that Ed Johnson wrote that wasn't going to fly. So they go back to the drawing board. Now they're calling it tactical training. I challenge each one of you to go to Google and type in definition tactical training. The only thing that I find pop up is something from Soviet experiment that was written in 1979. There really is not a whole lot of difference between tactical training and combat training. They can say there is. The decibels are going to be the same. The tactics that the boys use, whether it be tactical training or combat training, are very, 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 very similar. Okay? It's a blank round. It's a simulated explosion that actually goes to take a door off the hinges. It's noise pollution. And lastly, there's five different zonings that it removes conditional use permit for. This particular text amendment that they propose. To do that to the citizens of this county, granted, there's a 30-acre minimum requirement. That doesn't, it doesn't address, say, buying up 10 acres here, 20 acres next door, and combine the 30. Spoiledly, there was, the planning board said there was nine pieces of property to take. It affects the entire county. And to take away the people's rights to do what I'm doing now, stand up and speak my piece, I don't see where that's right. Kind of infringing on citizens of this county. You're perusing amendments, saying, "Wait a minute. We really want to do this." They trust in you guys and go to do in the office to do the right thing. I believe that you will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you.
Hi. Hi. I'm Lorraine Hancock, one of the various post-property owners over there. And I'd just like to start out and remind everybody that your council people elected you to protect us and to protect the residents of Scotland County.
Ma'am, could you, could you repeat your name one more time?
Lorraine Hancock. You are here to look out for our best interests in the citizens of Scotland County. I've moved here from a rural area that our council did not look out for our best interests. And I constantly had to fight big business to protect my land. 30 years I did that. I was done. Started looking 15 years ago for a place to retire. So what I did is, finally came to Scotland County, where I wanted to be. So started making here after 15 years. Searched, discovered the farm that I'm in now. And looking for very rural, very private, and a great quality of life. So when I found this place, I thought, "This is it. This is my retirement place. I never have to move." So I can raise my thoroughbred horses. I raise honeybeats. I can do all of that and not worry about anybody coming and encroaching on my land or my quality of life. Only to find, two months after buying this place, that my dreams of the dream house that I have, and for my quality of life, was about to be stripped away from me. And for the property loss that we're going to have, we paid top dollar for this. We paid market value. And now it's in jeopardy of losing all of that. So the property value definitely decreased as I bought. And it's going to be a poor decision to people that we've put in here to protect us. If this was going to be in your backyard, this would not be an issue. Would it not even be on the table? There would be constant bombing and smoke and guns in your backyard. It would have happened. But it's not in your backyard, it's not. So the other decision we have is the bees. If they're in constant smoke, they will not be able to fly and pollinate, so most of the bees are going to die. My horses are thoroughbreds. I spent years researching who to breed what to. It's expensive. They're flight animals. As soon as they start hearing this, there's a good possibility that my 19 horses are going to wind up on 15, 501. My foals will be under constant stress, and possibly dying from just the trauma of the bombing. It's going to go on night and day. Since they are flighted and from not, um... But again, I just want to remind you, if this was going to be in your backyard, you would be thinking a lot stronger about it. Remember to practice, citizens, and do the right thing for your residents that we have trusted you. Be the one to do. And to protect us from losing our quality of life or property values. And you and yourself would not want to hear constant bombing, shooting, and smelling smoke, which also means I can't go outside. I'm a severe resident. So I cannot, I have letters from doctors if I cannot be in a severe smoke. I would have to leave the residents for at least 180 days or whatever that they're talking about. So thank you for listening to me. And I'm trusting you to make the right decisions for your residents. And keep in mind that you are here representing us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Greetings, Chair Davis and members of the Scotland County Board of Commissioners. My name is Philip Harris. I'm an attorney out of Raleigh, North Carolina, and I'm going to try to be brief. I'm impressed the lawyer didn't say he's going to be brief, but I'm going to do my best in time now. So I'm here, I represent a group called Veterans and Veteran Enforcements for the Sandhills. It's an organization that believes in conservation of game wildlife as well as, as well as facilitating wildlife activities. And I am here, and I submitted the comments in the, in the presentation package that you got, because my clients are concerned about opening up additional areas. My organization was partially founded because, as you note in your package, DGCI, who is doing a similar facility as this, is actually adjacent to game land. So my clients understand that there could be some potential detrimental impacts to that game land. I wanted to just touch on a few things. Most of what, most of, most of the important stuff is in the information that I provided to you. But I did want to touch on a few things. One, why is a conditional use permit here appropriate for either type of facility? Well, number one, when you're reviewing a conditional use permit, as I'm sure you understand, there are three additional conditions or factors that you have to, you have to review. And one is that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. Two, that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values, value, impair property values within the neighborhood. And three, that the establishment of the conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. So these are all factors that are used when you're looking at unusual type of activities, like a tactical and combat training facility, which is why in four of the five counties that Mr. Essig and Mr. Purcell mentioned, they require these for these type of facilities. This is unlike any of the other uses in the neighborhood commercial, highway commercial, or the, uh, the light industry. The regular uses or the conditional uses. The conditional uses, for instance, in the neighborhood commercial district, you have to get a conditional use permit for bait stores, marinas, service stations, and fruit stands. And a tactical training facility certainly is a little bit more unusual in the neighborhood commercial district than either of those things. And that's why we would just respectfully request that you require a CUP for either of these facilities. These are unique. They're going to be unique in each one of the zoning districts that are allowed there. And frankly, if you did want to start, as Mr. Essig mentioned, he focuses on how dangerous the conditional use permit process would be. This is not the place to, to not use the conditional use permit process. Maybe with the bait stores, marinas, and fruit stands, maybe there's not a conditional use permit required for those. But a tactical and combat training facility, certain a conditional use permit should be required. So I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Derek Williams. I'm a veteran, and I currently work on Core Brag, as a contractor, supporting training on the insulation. What I'd like to address tonight is specifically in respect to the provision that specifies the 60 days for the tactical training facility. The memorandum or letter that was put out today that specifically said that the contract company only forecasts 30 days of current utilization for simulated rounds. I don't know if any of you've ever heard of simulated rounds, but it sounds an awful lot like a real round. And one of the points that the memorandum made was that those rounds should only be expended within 30 days, or a maximum of 30 days within the, uh, the training facility. And that it should be no more of a nuisance than, what is it, hunters that are operating in the area. I can tell you that whenever you're doing simulated training, that one round does not sound very much like a simulated combat training, uh, training exercise. There's multiple rounds going off. It's simul, it's there to design to simulate war, right? So trying to sit there and attest that you're, that you're not going to feel like you're in a war zone and try and downplay that is, is, I think, disingenuous on the part of the contract company. I think that the facility will be used to the maximum extent that the county commission is going to allow and grant them and bestow them the, the facility. It may be only 30 days in the first year, but it'll go to 60 days. And as I heard earlier in the lawyer present, they can ask for, um, an exception to that to grant, uh, the, for the county to grant them an even longer period. Eventually, that'll grow to, to encompass that as well. I, I object to the nature that the tactical training facility should be allowed in anything other than an L2 training, or, excuse me, an industrial complex. I think it should be accompanied along with the combat training facilities as outlined. That is my, that is my saying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Courtney Williams. And that was my husband, Derek Williams. It just spoke. Between the two of us, my husband runs the intel training for Core Brag, the simulated training that you will hear the artillery explosives going off. And we both have about 15 years' military experience, between the two of us. My last six years have been spent supporting Delta Force at the compound. So we have a great understanding of the differences between simulated and non-simulated training. Our biggest issue is, for those who don't know, in the county, there's a lot of residents in Scotland County that are not familiar with military jargon, military tactics, and training. I do not feel that the county's residents have been educated enough on what this will do to the county and transform the county. We were more county residents for 10 years. There is a reason that more county has not allowed this. They have allowed training facilities for intel training, but they will not permit this to come to their county because they do not want to transform their county into an industrial zone where live fire will be allowed, simulated rounds will be allowed, and it will push residents away from wanting to settle in their county. And I believe that if we go forward with this as we are currently, without making more amendments that other Deercroft homeowners have already spoken to, so I'm not going to repeat them, that we will be allowing the military training to take over. We'll become an industrial area. We will, if everybody's gone out and looked at the facility and maxed in, that is what we are going to transform Scotland County into. And we will not be the beautiful county that people come to live in, that we are now. So I, I hope the board takes those points into consideration when moving forward. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Davis, Commissioners Andrew Patterson. My name is Andrew Neiman. I was raised a majority of the way from Morgueburg. This community needs so much help.
What's your name? Sir, what's your name, please?
Oh, well, I guess my name is Andrew Neiman.
Ne- Neiman?
Neiman, sir. You want me to recite? Part of what made Morgueburg a building of my family and myself is the quiet life. This is much bigger than just a private facility. Our community, our community's future is very, very at stake. We're trying to accommodate this warm project. Our lived earth, the promise, and the rights of all Scotland County systems, all combat training facilities to be built next to vital community access, such as school, search and daycare facilities, and hospitals, and a lot of others. When this meeting is done, in your upcoming day, I have to conduct a Shabbat at home, and this is perfect to complicate things for myself and my family. Community input is essential during the zoning process to protect the health and safety of citizens and the community growth, and the Shabbat of the public is fundamental to that. That the proposed zoning definition change means that Scotland County residents in favor of this new type of zoning are forfeiting their rights to conditional use permit during the process. Military training facilities should not border our neighborhood or Scotland County state game because of the disturbance to wildlife hunters and public numbers. Any facility in Scotland County being used for tactical or combat training should require a conditional use permit where neighbors have an opportunity to present evidence about how explosions and automatic weapons could affect their lives, livelihoods, and property values. If future of the county and its lawyers are rewriting Scotland County's zoning laws and rushing to pass them in the middle of the pandemic when people are distracted, I, among other communities, find that despicable. Proposed amendments to the short-term solution that would have long-lasting negative implications to our community. Tonight, I'm calling on our county commissioners, to carefully consider the far-reaching implications this zoning change would have on Scotland County. We are trying to make another decision regarding, we have placed in the name of Jacob Harwood, Sam Wasteman, here, and so on to follow, all as we know in our medical law. And most of you live within the city where these issues don't necessarily concern you. We implore you to make the right decision for the community, especially our local citizens. If each of our communities is at stake, please don't go on with the proposed amendment. We don't want our neighbors turning into a risk. On behalf of Daryl Lake Dare, since you could not be here tonight, these, these have this statement. Good evening. For those who don't know, we have Daryl Lake Dare. I'm a Scotland County dareer. My family has a long history in this community that we love. As you may know, my father was the first to take a course in the NWA CBI in Scotland County. My family and I also established the Mayfair Foundation Incorporated Scholarship Fund designed to support local healthcare access as they further their academic pursuits at historically black colleges and universities. You want to be here tonight to speak up, to give voice to millions of communities whose voices don't want to get unheard. Zoning text change amendment being concerned that a pay-per-view from the Core Brag or Washington DC event contributors to turn our neighbors in a war zone of that is set for neighboric families. The proposed DGCI tactical training facilities are of particular concern as it would have a disparate impact on active management, particularly families living in nearby neighborhoods. If things are simple, any facility in Scotland County being used for tactical or combat training should require a conditional use permit where neighbors have an opportunity to present evidence about how explosions or automatic weapons could affect their lives, livelihoods, and property values. Scotland County's mission is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens in low proximity and well-made for the people of Scotland County. The proposed zoning law change and swift manner which are being considered indirect conflict with the county's mission. Community input is essential during the zoning process to protect the health and safety of our citizens of our citizens and the community growth. This time of year by the representative, no heroes are saying, turn your facility, turn your neighborhood into a war zone with the proposed text change being here tonight. Your backyard may be next. He stands with the Scotland County Ministry of Law and Order, and he calls on Commissioners to stand up for Scotland County. Vote.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's the man.
That's everybody called against. Y'all okay?
Okay.
Bring those.
Yeah, bring the others in.
Can we, can we take a couple minutes break?
Hey, cool. Give us about five minutes, okay? Yeah, we'll recess five minutes. Just take a break. We'll be back in five minutes.
I didn't know whether you wanted to go, and thank those who've already spoken.
I will, I will. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. I still want to talk over anybody. May I proceed?
Yes, sir. State your name and where you're from.
Yes, sir. Can y'all hear me okay? I'm still figuring out the mask thing. Uh, my name is TC Morpheus. I'm an attorney with Grove Law Firm out of Chapelville, and I'm here on behalf of DGCI Corporation in support of the proposed text amendment. Uh, with me tonight, we'll be hearing speaking are two representatives from DGCI, uh, Mr. Bobby Cinco, Mr. Rusty Nance, and Mr. Wade Owens. I'm going to talk to you all about the text amendment, what we think is good for DGCI, what we think is good for Scotland County. Uh, Mr. Cinco, Mr. Nance, and Mr. Owens are going to talk about a specific project that's kind of given rise to all of us. While the focus, of course, is on the text amendment, you all have heard a lot of information from folks about that specific project. With all due respect, you've heard a lot of misinformation, but we would like to try and set the record straight, so that, and so that's what my colleagues will be doing. Uh, before I speak about the text amendment, I think it's also important that we put this in context. People are talking about, uh, training, they're talking about quality of life, this and that. What I did not hear folks opposed to the project talking about were defense contractors. And I respectfully say to you, that is what is really going on here. There's a fight between two defense contractors to obtain a training contract with US Army Special Forces and US Military General. I do not have specific evidence that I can give you tonight, so I will not name names, but I would submit to you that if my clients are able to build their project as proposed, another defense contractor who will make similar facility also over Carolina will not be able to operate that facility anymore. It is that simple. I do not want to belabor this, but I think these details are important because they provide important context. Two thousand and eighteen, DGCI decided they wanted to become a part of Scotland County. They started the process of preparing their site for this project. Mr. Owens, who you're going to hear from, spoke with Scotland County zoning staff. He said, "What do I need to do?" And on their advice, he submitted a rezoning request for a neighborhood commercial. That was the advice he received. There was no hide the ball kind of shelving going on. The application was crystal clear, they were going to be doing military training. This talk about live fire and all that, that has never been the case, and it will not be the case. It was very clear though, from day one, military training. Promptly was rezoned, and we, until January of this year, believed that that's all we need. I'll say January, actually, after March. Nothing happened for nearly fourteen months. On January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, DGCI got a pre-order bid notification. That means they were told by the government they were going to get this contract. It means they had to get it, but they were going to get it. Three days later, and these are all public records, we can provide them to everyone, an attorney named Lacy Reeves, a very well-respected attorney from the Smith Anderson law firm in Raleigh, very large law firm. Excuse me? Okay. Um, sends a letter, three days later, on behalf of an anonymous client, we still don't know who that client is, asking for interpretation of zoning ordinance dealing with training facilities. After that, uh, the county attorney issues a letter basically saying DGCI cannot get, cannot proceed. My firm gets involved, we file appeals to the Board of Adjustment, we have communications, and it's decided that the fact we can't proceed. The building permit is issued in May of this year. Within thirty days, Mr. Owens and Ms. Hancock filed an appeal to the Board of Adjustment and a lawsuit, uh, against DGCI and all of Scotland County. Uh, I don't think any of that is a coincidence. We have just recently received a dispute request in the lawsuit referencing a company called Akila Alliance LLC, which respectfully has, in my opinion, and I, of course, am a little biased, nothing to do with their lawsuit. It does, however, have to do with that contract. Uh, it is also worth noting that the firm that Mr. Reeves works for is the same firm representing Mr. Owens and Ms. Hancock. A second firm, you heard from Mr. Philip Harris this evening, he says he's from a firm in Raleigh. He's actually from Patrick, Texas, and that is a very well-respected firm in Raleigh. They also have lawsuits, some of them represent defense contracts. So that may also be a coincidence. But I think what is going on here is every time DGCI moves forward, their opposition pushes them back. The last thing I want to say before I get to the text amendment is I want to address something specific with Mr. Russell, but his, uh, letter to you on dated September third. He talks about Akila Alliance, and he says, "The US Small Business Administration disqualified DGCI and its partners at Akila Alliance." Then he goes on to say, "DGCI continues to pursue plans to build a facility, but has not informed its neighbors who it plans to train on the property or how they would operate." So it sounds mysterious and terrible. Well, our mission has not changed from day one. It is true, they were disqualified. There were numerous protests after, been protests after we were the successful bidders and notified in January, and at some point, the US Small Business Administration determined there was a single line in the joint venture agreement that was not correct. Because of that, Akila Alliance, who would be working with DGCI, was disqualified. But we believe this contract will be renewed, probably next year, if not in the next few years. We want to be in a position to take advantage of that, to bring the jobs and that tax base to Scotland County. So DGCI has been it for the long haul. So when you ask who is mysterious folks, that hasn't changed. Now, I want to talk to you about the text amendment specifically. We think this is a good compromise, and I, I think before I get too far into it, we believe that DGCI has a right, right now, to build that property. We have a building permit that is valid, we have voluntarily agreed not to build until October one because of the Board of Adjustment appeal. Apart from that, we can start immediately. However, we are happy to work with the county because we believe this text amendment provides clarity of just for us, but also for future people who want to work in Scotland County. For us, right now, our right to build is being challenged by the Board of Adjustment. If this text amendment passes, then DGCI can submit an application to obtain a permit under the text amendment. It's just that simple for us. We believe this is reasonable because it recognizes there's a range of uses. You've heard tremendous information about live fire, this and that. Well, you know, if that's the proposal, then that needs to be what's going to call a combat training facility, which, as you all know by now, would require additional use permit and have industrial training. You have something like our facility with no live fire training, that's not even used for half a year, uh, with limited use simulated weapons, which, I think my folks are going to talk about how we really prepare to live fire, uh, much less to the extraordinary artillery you'd need to hear something miles away in a neighboring community, um, than the much lighter use, the tactical training facility is appropriate, agreeing the strikes of good balance. About this heavy uses, intensive uses are going to need a conditional use permit, and less intensive uses will proceed to work, more business friendly, letting people private property, not a golden public land, private property, use their property in the way to benefit Scotland County. Last thing that's nice that you all already noticed, there are protections even under the tactical training facility. You must have thirty-eight. You have to still maintain boundary. You have limits on the days you can operate, the days you can even have simulated fire. So we think all of this is appropriate. Uh, we think it strikes a good balance. We hope that the county will approve the text amendment so we can move forward. I'm happy to answer any questions. Although I'll ask, uh, Mr. Seabird. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. He's got three minutes.
There were more than three.
There are, there are only four of us. Uh, there are only four of us, sir. So I think we're sticking with a longer. Uh, we're still going to limit to thirty minutes.
You're still limited to three minutes, sir.
Oh, we are?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, we did not know that.
Yes, sir.
So I'll let my folks do that. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, ma'am. I thought we had said we were going to leave.
Three minutes. Last time, I mean, that's, that's good.
Good afternoon, can everybody hear me?
If you don't mind, give us just a minute.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You can wait right here.
Yeah, you can wait, here's our, sir.
He can wait.
You can wait in here.
Come, come on back. Yes, sir. Just, just, just give us, stay right here a bit.
There's four.
There's four.
Okay, so you're going to divide that into thirty. Give him seven minutes, please.
Did, did it not say that, that total time for each side would be no more than thirty minutes, that each presenter had?
That's what it said, or?
Yes.
That's what it said.
Okay.
It's in the lighter portion. He, he didn't speak three minutes, he, he probably more like five minutes.
We all know three minutes, sir, sir. There's three minutes, but we'll be less if we have to. We have no problem with that, sir. We don't want to take too deep.
No, you're fine. If you want to speak five minutes, that's good.
Three, sir, or less.
Whatever. Make yourself, make yourself happy, thank you.
Well, thank you, sir, ma'am. I was intrigued.
Uh, ma'am, my name is Bobby Cinco. I am the Director of Training for DGCI. Obviously, you can hear my voice, and I'm, I'm obviously from the north.
And what was your last name, sir?
You can call a misplaced Yankee, because I've been here since nineteen eighty and I never went home.
Your last name again.
Cinco, sir, just like kitchen sink with a no, S-I-N-K-O.
All right, sir, thank you.
Sir, first, I'd like to thank, uh, like to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to talk to you this afternoon and into tonight. Consider it an honor, uh, to be with you today, and the reason I feel that I think Scotland County is one of the most patriotic counties, not only North Carolina, but probably the world. Why would I say that? Why? Why would some guy who came here in nineteen eighty from the north say that? I'm a retired US Army Sergeant Major, Special Forces Green Beret, that did thirty years in the Army from nineteen eighty to twenty-ten, did multiple combat tours, and where did I get that training? I got that training right here in northern Scotland County, Ryan Lewis-on drop zone, southern Camp McCall, and the areas around the game lands and everything, right here in this county. Somebody had a training, and it was the great people supporting from this great county and those soldiers that trained me, and thousands of other men and women, black, white, of any color, any gender, to go fight our country's wars and win, because we have a lot to lose. And I think Scotland County knows that more than anyone. You guys have places here, Ryan Lewis-on and other places there, you see helicopters, you see planes, you see soldiers, but if you really look at it, how much do they really, how much noise and how much movement do they truly do that really bothers people from Scotland County? And if, if you look at that, the majority of the people that I've talked to that trained me and have done supporting roles, out in Robin Sage and some of the other supporting exercises that are ran in the Special Forces qualification course, they will tell you they love to do it. They've been supporting the US Army and Special Forces for over sixty years now, and are proud of it, and we're proud of it. I'm proud of it. There's a lot of misconceptions that are being put out there, and some of the people that are going to talk after me, some of my former officers and commanders, that will try to separate the fact from the fiction and let you know exactly what's going to go on. Again, I am pleased to come and report you today to let you know that this county, in its patriotic duty, has happened since World War II. With the airport, with the training of the World War II pilots, with the glider troops, with the paratroops, all the way through Vietnam into today. And that sound of freedom still runs through this county. So from the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank you for letting me train here when I was a younger man, up until I am today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service.
Hey, how are y'all?
Good.
Good. I am, uh, Lieutenant Colonel, retired Rusty Nance, and I appreciate the opportunity coming to address you ladies and gentlemen today. I retired with a little over twenty years in the military. I'm, uh, North Carolina by birth, and I've spent, I just figured it out today, over twenty-five years in this general area, so I've lived here more than I've lived anywhere else in my life. Uh, I'm a second-generation Green Beret, so I trained here in Scotland County at Camp McCall, as did my father, uh, Vietnam era. My son is currently deployed in the sandbox, and when he returns, it's coming spring. He plans on coming through Special Forces Selection Assessment, so he'll be the third generation to do this. Interestingly enough, when I retired, uh, the John F. Kennedy Special Warfare Center and School, I was the Director of Language and Culture, which is an interesting career path. What I begged for, and what I needed desperately, I had nineteen, over nineteen hundred students in the final year, that was at the height of the war. What I desperately needed was language and culture immersion facilities. We had none on BRAG. We had plenty of fire maneuver areas, we didn't have any cultural villages. At that time, we were writing the R-SO services court contract, this was around twenty-ten, and I begged to have them written into the contract, it was. That contract was one, and we did our training all post then. Fast forward, um, the contract is now being led again, and we still need them. In the big army, and don't confuse Special Forces with Rangers, or Navy SEALs, or even the Marine Corps, you are taught to shoot, move, communicate. And I get it, that's what keeps soldiers alive. In Special Forces, we do it a little bit different. We communicate first, and then we move, and then we shoot. Unfortunately, we do a great deal of shooting in Special Forces. What we've done over the past twenty years, we have assisted a partner nation addressing their own internal security issues and securing their own borders, and that's the way we're going to win the global war of terrorism. It will not be one with blunt force trauma. If that's how it would be won, we would have ended this war in a period of three or four years. We send these soldiers to do a very tough job, and the way in order to do that is we have to teach them how to live in a foreign culture. We live with our partner nation forces, unlike every other force that's out there. So they immerse in a foreign culture, they live with them, they speak the foreign language to a degree. Admittedly, it's difficult to learn a foreign language in six months. So what we do in these, these cultural villages, we bring these soldiers in, we put role players in the village, and we hit them with the limits, and they learn, they learn how to deal with these cultural issues, and that's what we're teaching in these villages. Now, last year, and I don't recall the exact number, I think we lost around six Green Berets to Afghanistan. And the question you have to ask yourself is, had they not had this cultural immersion training, they didn't speak foreign language, how many would we have lost to Afghanistan? What we're trying to do is save lives, and that's the purpose of these villages. Military installations are really great places to do live fire training. They're really great places to do shooting. They're really great places to do moving, but right now, still today, they're not great places for community, and that's what we're trying to do. There are a great deal of misconceptions floating out there, and I'm sure everyone before me has pointed this out, we're not live firing or at, it is not suitable. We would have to build huge arms, and frankly, we never wanted to do that out there. A blank fire is not a live fire by any stretch of the imagination. I don't care if there's the same amount of powder and ground, if there's a blanket that is on, it is not loud whatsoever. A grenade simulator is not a breaching charge. We cannot, will not blow doors off any facility we have out there that was never our intention. It is not a loud area. I do have to point out, that in the Sand Hills, Sand Hills game land, the military is authorized to train. However, they can only use blank fire, and they can only use grenade simulators. The Sand Hills game land puts up to the Deercroft community, right to them. So the things we're doing at our training facility can be done right next door to the Deercroft community, so we're not asking for anything unusual. Military can train in Sand Hills game area, so the gentleman who was addressing this unusual activity in the Sand Hills game land, well, actually, no, it's not. We're not doing anything on our land that you can't already, the military can't already do in the Sand Hills game land, so I'm a little bit confused. I feel sorry for the lady, uh, she loves her horses, I love my horses, I plan on having my horses at the training facility as well. It is co-located right next to Ryan Lewis-on drop zone, where they already use, like, drop tanks on Camp McCall, to my knowledge, and they'll walk in there. I'm sorry, I don't need to, I think I've exceeded my three minutes, I'm a little bit nervous. What are your questions for me, please?
Actually, do you have one?
Yes.
One of the comments that someone has made, I've made it in one of the letters, I don't know where it came from. There was a comment about, uh, how many folks that DCGI might employ as a local community.
Yeah, I can't answer that. Uh, honestly, I cannot. Way to him would be better. He would think he's after me next. Please ask him that question, he's prepared to address it. I don't know that he can, but I know he's met with someone to set up a, a hiring board here in the community. Please, please, please ask me that. Yes, sir. Ma'am?
I have a question. Uh, I heard you on the radio this morning.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would like to thank you for highlighting the long history of military support that Scotland County has provided for the last seventy-five. for the last seventy-five, seventy-five years.
I didn't have the numbers straight.
I think we may never know it, but we don't hear it.
I had to, I actually did some research on that, and it's absolutely phenomenal what Scotland County did. I think it's overlooked, I really do, especially the D-Day thing that I brought up this morning. You know, for Eisenhower came here, and he had a day job. I mean, he was in charge of everything that was going on in European theater, and it's a big deal. He flew all the way back because he was getting ready for D-Day. And D-Day was a big deal, I mean, that was the apex. They knew if they could establish a foothold, that it was over with. Eventually, they went, and it would be touch and go, but, no, it was, that was a big deal. And Scotland County played a huge deal. Had they not come here and rehearsed, it would have been a train wreck. And I give you, it was a disaster, I appreciate it, it was my pleasure.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Yes, sir. What are the questions, Amina? Please.
I believe we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you all ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, good evening. My name is Wade Owens, I'm a employee of DCGI. Appreciate you taking time, I know it's been a long evening. I'd like to take a moment with our perspective on the text amendment and on our specific project. We're happy to answer any questions you have on our project as we go along. Besides being a member of DCGI, I served in the military for twenty-six years as an infantry Special Forces officer. Did conduct a training at Camp McCall. Did multiple tours at Fort Prag, in one of which I was the Director of Training at the JMP Special Warfare Center and School, where we were responsible for development, managing the training programs and instruction for all Army Special Operations training. And when I retired, the first job I did outside the military was working for a company that actually ran the RSOF training support project, which you've heard about tonight. So, I know intimately the requirements of the contract, and what it takes to execute that contract, the uses of the training facility, and the things that are going to go on in any facility. As most of you probably know, I'll just give you a quick update or summary. Our property is located in North Scottland County, about a mile south of Camp McCall. We have a road twenty on Highway fifteen-five-oh-one, and about roughly, probably two-thirds of our property is property on the east. South, part of the west, and a good chunk of the north is bounded by Sandhills game. There are two pieces of private property that bound a part of our land, one of them is a free farm, and the other is owned by a citizen that lives in North. As I stated earlier, or as was stated earlier by one of my colleagues, we purchased this land specifically for the purpose of conducting military training. And one of the things that Rusty talked to you all about was the training that we're doing is primarily focused on interpersonal communications, cross-cultural communications, negotiations, on play presentation, that sort of thing. And the facility that we're going to be building will include four village complexes with eight buildings each that include a religious structure, whether it's a church, a temple, a mosque, a market, residences, schools, and that sort of thing. So, it will facilitate a wide variety of interactions. And these facilities will be equipped with props and role players, sometimes it will be Navy officials, sometimes not, that will facilitate these interactions and the training of personnel. So, a lot of the information that I think you've heard, and I haven't, and you've heard over maybe the last several days, really focuses on some of the combat-related training. There will be a little bit that takes place in our facility, and we'll talk to you about that in a minute. But just as a little background, and some of you may remember, DCGI worked for Scotland County back in 2018 to get, bringing this property that we wanted to library zone. It was originally zoned open space. Located the property, went to the zoning office, talked to the staff there, worked with them, submitted an application, not an application. We stayed specifically with purpose for the, our use for the facility. And in September of eighteen, I met with the Planning and Zoning Board, again, in person, talked to them about what we're going to do at the facility. And then in November, met with this body of county commissioners, and explained and answered questions on the use of our property. The property description that I talked about at that point has not changed. And just to refresh, and make sure everybody understands very clearly what we're going to be doing, I'm just going to read to you kind of what that is. So, our intended activities on our property are support military training for Army Special Operations soldiers based in Fort Prag and Camp McCall. To meet the US government requirements, our facility will require to consist of four villages, eight buildings, buildings each, that will be connected by trail network. And these villages will be built to populate different regions around the world where our soldiers will most likely be operating. They will primarily be used as a training facility for a variety of non-combative situational training exercises that have been described previously. Most of the training will be done in daylight hours and not involve the use of firearms. And there will be absolutely no use of live firearms on the property, or live explosives. The, there will be times, potentially, if the government wants to use it, they could use it for tactical training, which could use for responding tactics, or there may be teams that are up to call orders, that would participate in reconnaissance, potentially raids, or some sort of an ambush, which are short-duration missions. And there will be blank ammunition fired at that time, but it wouldn't last very long, and it doesn't happen very often. There are, as we said, our estimated facility usage is probably about one hundred and twenty days a year. And we think that the use of blank ammunition would be thirty days a year or less. And I'm saying that based on experience with running this contract, and then historical use. So, on the fifth of November, the Scotland County Commissioners approved our resilient application, and we started working on the project. We actually bought the land because the purchase of the land was contingent upon, on the recent process. So, we've been working on that ever since. I just, would kind of like to point out that, you know, I think that the training plans that we have on our site are really consistent with a lot of activity that already happens in the area. As I mentioned, we are bounded by large tracts of Sandhills game lands, and very close to Camp McCall. If you don't know, at Sandhills game lands, military has authorization and permission to conduct training on Sandhills game lands. And they do frequently, I did when I was there, training range for land navigation to small unit tactics, which involves blank fire. So, that happens in the area. Also, the Robyn Sage exercise, which you're all familiar with, happens in about thirteen counties in central North Carolina, six times a year. You know, on private land and public land. And it's been happening for sixty years, so. So, what we're asking for, not inconsistent with that. And also like to highlight that as part of the US government's due diligence process, when they were awarding the contract, or looking at the work of the contract, was to conduct an environmental assessment on our property. So, we had an environmental team from US Army Installation Command come to our site, through the site, through our state plan, and looked around. They were looking at impacts on the environment, such as on endangered species, on watersheds, on historic sites. And they also looked at noise, and the impact of noise. And in their report that they completed in May of this year, that team determined that there was no, quote, it says, "will have no effect on existing noise," as the site is next to a portion of McCall Army airfield where noise levels routinely reach sixty to sixty-five decibels. So, that's what the Army team discussed. So, DCGI, you know, again, we support the text amendment, we want to be good neighbors. We're willing to do whatever we can to mitigate that any impact. Because I understand, you know, people have concerns that this is going to impact the quality of life. I think that, I think that that has been overstated. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on that. One other impact on the county, if we were to be awarded this contract, and that contract is going to be coming down for solicitation again, I believe, is that there are hundreds of role players that are, that must be hired, support this contract every year. I heard a gentleman earlier say that he didn't think that that would be really of much advantage to the county. And it's true, there are some role players that have specific skills, but there are some role players that don't really require skills. But they're just going to be a guerrilla soldier on the battlefield running around. And we would look up to Scotland County to hire some of those people, actually, in the spring, after we received the pre-award notification. I met with Mark Ford from Economic Development Corporation, and Chris English from the Chamber of Commerce, and discussed having a job fair, and they were really supportive with that idea, and offered to use their facility for that purpose. And we plan to carry on with that in the event that we are awarded a contract in the future. So, I guess just to summarize, I would say that, you know, from my perspective in the DCGI, we've followed, you know, all the procedures, we've been asked to follow by the county. I feel like we've been open and transparent from the beginning. I know there are a lot of complaints of reference and intended activities, but I'm telling you that those, there's an exaggeration of the types of training that people have talked about, you know, talking about noise, talking about smoke. I mean, there's, there may be some smoke generated from our site from a handheld smoke grenade, which is a signaling device. But I would be shocked if it left the boundary of our property. Certainly, it's not going to go impact, you know, neighboring properties at all. So, I guess that's really all the comments that I have. I think I don't want to be redundant, but the folks have been at the previous, and I've done a long time, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Owens? If not, we, we thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, sir. Is that all of them? That's all the speakers?
Yes, sir.
So, if you close the public hearing, then I will close the, the voting, I don't know, just close the public hearing.
Does anyone have any clarifying questions, if counsel?
I don't know, I believe that he didn't say something. Do you want somebody to make a motion for that?
Well, I, before we make a motion, I'd like to make a suggestion. Hearing what we've heard from all these folks, and the biggest thing that I've heard out of it is the conditional use. And I, personally, I would like to see us delay the vote on this for one week. At least meet back next Wednesday at five-thirty, right here. And in the meantime, between now and then, sit down with a representative from Deercroft, a representative from the Scotland County Ministerial Alliance churches. They all have questions about this conditional use thing.
We're planning for them to come before we have a meeting next Wednesday, rather than having a sit-down with them.
No, that's what I'm saying, we will meet with the, these folks between now and next Wednesday. When we come together next Wednesday, all we'll do is vote yea or nay. I just feel like it would make, it would give the folks a chance, or at least a chance, to clarify the reason this conditional use thing was left out. That, that's a suggestion, any?
Well, I agree with that. I add to it, I feel like I'm screaming, but I do want to be heard. I want everyone that's engaged in this issue, for or against it, to really believe that they can trust. We as a board have done due diligence to everything that we have heard and read. And I think the way to do that is for us to take a week, consume all of this material, read it again, think about it, reach out to the HOA at Deercroft, reach out to Ministerial Alliance, answer their questions, hear their concerns. I don't want anyone to think that we have not done our due diligence and honored our responsibility as county commissioners. I can say personally, I have been on the board ten years, and no one issue has concerned my time or my effort as much as this has. I have spent days on this subject, and I want the community to know that, because I think it's important that they know all of us have. But I'm with you a hundred percent, Bob, and that would be a good way to present.
Totally agree. Anytime you have a hundred signatures, we need to.
I just, I just think it would leave a better, you know, and I'll be right blunt, you know, y'all are going to have to live with this. I've got two more meetings, and I'm gone. So, y'all, y'all are going to have to.
Are we in a position to give them what they want, or are we in a position to give them?
I know that, but whether I was going to be here or not, I still think it's a smart thing to do.
I think anytime you have a public hearing with a volume of information that's been presented to us, it, to me, it's going to take me a while to digest that. And I've, I've read all the stuff that was in the package, and I want to go back and reread a couple of things. And I'm, I guess in my mind, I want to get a better sense that not going with the conditional use permit is a good idea. I'm not convinced that I know which direction we need to go right in.
I have a question about, should we lock ourselves in to doing this next week? It seems to me we need to.
I mean, I, you know, that was just a, that was just a.
Say next week?
That was just a.
Okay, but I, what I'm hearing from these folks, they, from this area, they signature, they are not opposed completely. They want a conditional use permit, they want to know what that is, and they want to be assured that the folks that come there are going to comply with it, that they, they want to be assured of that. Well, we, we need to listen to that and make sure that we relocate. We've already resolved it, or we, we approved that within 2018, so we've already done it. We just need to make sure now that we listen to both sides and do the best we can. I don't know what that is, I'm not sure.
Well, you've got.
I guess I'm going to stop here. Obviously, one neighbor, the couple didn't want to come, and then you have a whole lot of neighbors here. And we need to really give some weight to these folks, who, not only for themselves, their livelihood, but even their animals. Because you know how animals react to noise. And I can tell you again, over anybody tell you about the desafio loud, I've been trained in that. This is loud noise, loud on a truck. This is loud, and then a train coming through town, and you were right there at it. It's that loud, okay? Because all this was rapid at one time, it was, you shoot down, that's the sound. Dog, grenades, I don't, I'm not a good with every person. For these folks to have a legitimate. But these folks have a legitimate concern. They have a right to be concerned, because they know, you know, so I can tell you, Bob, let's agree to sit down with these folks and come to the best decision that we've been made, that we've already agreed that they could come. Now, we have something we need to clean up.
Since we are limited and with the virus, a lot of violence, and how many people are concerned before each other, I, I don't see whether it's really necessary to throw in the pastors and the minister, this is Mr. Gibson's part, that's his part, that's his group. And I, I can understand their general concern, but we need to spend, concentrate on the people from Deercroft area and not use the space. It was, we could have auditory of everybody come in, but we're limited into the stomach of people.
That's not what I'm saying, baby. I'm saying take one person from the Deercroft community.
One?
Or two, one or two spokesmen, whoever's going to speak.
He lives in Combs Meadows.
Whoever, from Deercroft, whoever.
He lives at the table.
You represent them, John.
He can't represent the folk up there.
He can't represent them. He can't, can't disgrass them. He represent.
Who?
Okay.
He lives at...
But whether it be any minister, they still represent.
I know, I was saying that, these, so many people that from this area are involved, you know, I was trying to make more space and opportunity for them to be heard, you know? And yet, we respect the Ministerial Alliance and all that, but I was just trying to make more room for the people that are involved, you know?
The reason I said that, if we've got a letter from them, and I think we need to recognize it, we've got a letter from, many letters from the folks at Deercroft. And you talk about Deercroft, but y'all know as well as I know, in, in and around that Deercroft area, there's a lot of black folks that live in that, in that area, you know? It's not just strictly...
I didn't get a call from, I got some residents that stay around.
That's exactly right.
Nobody from Deercroft called me at all.
That's right.
But residents, if they represent, represent me, they call.
That's exactly right.
And I have a problem with them.
My concern for that is...
I'm fit to fit it. I'll tell you nothing.
People from, that live, that live on the South Carolina line, can't address the noise. If you don't legally represent it, you can't speak to your animal being terrified, or your profit value going down. And I'm saying, if you have room for that kind of representation, if we have, but we can't, we can't ask them any questions about the noise, his animals, his profit value.
Who?
BJ Gibson. He can't address that.
He just, he just a spokesperson.
That's what I was saying. Let's address the people that's involved. That's what I'm saying. It doesn't matter.
Well, going back to what Bob originally said, I think that time can be used better to, to educate a lot of people on more of what's actually going to happen.
That's right.
You know, because there's a lot of this stuff in Deercroft, and especially Mr. Owen's property. I mean, he's 600 feet away from Camp Cal. We have no control what happens there. I guarantee you the stuff that goes on Camp Cal is going to be a whole lot worse, that would never be considered in this area. But I don't think people see that right now, you know?
Well, that's why I think we need to step back.
But John, at a point, they would need to be more than a week, you know? They say we're going too fast, right?
Well, I mean, I, I just, that, you know, that's just a timeframe I picked. I mean, I just, out of the clear, take two weeks or a month, put it off for our next meeting.
They say we're going too fast, so let's slow down. Digest all this.
But don't vote on it until our next meeting. I mean...
Can I ask counsel?
I, I agree with that.
Yeah, that's what he's here for.
Does that affect this... And also, DCGI is, probably, as they said, they're willing to hold till October 1st.
Yeah, it's getting closer.
I think they're, I think they're two separate issues. Yeah, I think they're two separate issues, and I think this is, again, text change that will regulate these uses irrespective of what's going on in those, in that, I don't think they're really related. So, I think it's whatever you guys feel comfortable with as far as time, and with the government time sensitive in the lawsuit that this is going to affect, is what I think.
If we've been adopted the first, whatever the date, whatever October meeting is.
What day is that date?
First Monday, whatever that is.
October 1st.
Yeah, I'm wondering, is there anything?
Do we harm ourselves?
If you're asking for legal advice, that probably needs to happen in closed session. But I don't think, I don't see the two issues as being, you take your time, what you need as it relates to this text change.
Well, if the statement was made earlier that, that DCGI has agreed not to do anything until October 1st, there's, but there's, we, I don't think there's any motivation for them right now to do anything until this matters, so, am I guessing wrong on that?
Yes, as, as the representative indicated, they, they have agreed as a part of the appeals and the fourth adjustment, that they will not do anything until October 1st. I imagine, I don't know, I don't know whether they would extend that time period, but I, I think they would probably like to see how this all turns out, but you know, I can't answer that question because I don't...
Are they still out there, any of them?
You mean, are people still out there?
I don't think so. I don't think they are. So I don't know, I just want to make sure.
Maybe, sir.
Maybe.
They should all, you might have to hear the man.
They will all let them go on their way.
There he is.
All, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Who's waiting there?
Oh. Should we?
If he, he probably needs to come in here if they're going to have a...
Bob, Bob. Hey, Bob, I think if there's a question, maybe we, I think we should ask it.
If you stay a few hours more, you come out in here.
I have a y'all.
Yeah, DCGI was here.
They want to get someone else.
Just so we don't get more than 25 people in here.
If you have any answers for the government, it's true.
Yes, I, I... So, you want a chair?
No, I'm good. I've been sitting down before.
Me too.
Yeah.
Now, what's the question?
Both of us are closing, everyone.
Y'all have said at one point in time that you were not going to do anything until after October, is that correct?
That's right.
All right. It's the consensus of our board, that since we have so many questions concerning some of the zoning things, that we want to meet with some of these folks and try to clear up any misunderstanding that might be out there with, with us and with this ordinance. So we are going to postpone any action, any voting, until our meeting in October, and I think that's October 5th.
Okay.
And we are going to meet with the Homeowners Association in Deercroft, and hear their concerns, and other folks that's concerned, to try and help them understand and help us understand what this zoning ordinance is all about.
Okay.
This text amendment, and I know the things that we hear, y'all hear the same thing we do. So we just want to do our due diligence to protect y'all and to protect the citizens of Deercroft and surrounding areas.
Sure.
Yes, we can, we can extend that law over, and we certainly allow to, you know, for...
October 1st to do at least...
Yeah, at least until your next meeting, which is, he said, my folks...
Thank y'all.
Yeah, and we're happy to, you know, let some folks from Deercroft come to our place and give them two or three rounds early, and see what they hear from their location. Happy to go.
I've got a phone call Friday from, I think, these two gentlemen, BJ Gibson. And, and they made that offer. And I think, I know, and I hope the people, if anybody who was interested, if you make that offer, and we make it out, out with the virus, everybody can get it, the representatives can see, and y'all do that demonstration, the firing on your property at the decimal level that you're not allowed to go to, and let the folks at Deercroft see, they can hear it, and as well as the, the property owners as well.
Yes.
I think that was a good suggestion, Captain. We'll have to do it.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
But y'all, happy with that?
Yes, sir.
And we will be in contact with the folks that's at the Homeowners Association, and also y'all that live out there in that, there's a horse farm, and I've got horses too, so... But anyway, we want to, we wanted to do what's right by all parties.
We have other folks who have sent us letters too, that we also want to have a part in that process, so that's, that's...
And we, we thank y'all for being here and for coming, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Kevin, since we passed the vote of hearing tonight, we don't need any kind of motion to delay it.
Right.
You would probably vote to table, well, table the vote.
Until...
Yeah. You don't, you may not necessarily need it, but it would probably be cleaner if you tabled the vote.
I think we tabled this matter, and I suck at that motion. Now, we make the motion to table this matter until our next record is given.
October 5th. Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that. All right. And I would ask staff to contact the Homeowners Association, and set up a time to meet with them and any other interested folks that, to try and clear, clarify this resolution and this, this why some of it was left out, okay? Is that agreeable with everybody? All right, we've been here a long time, so let's put that one to sleep for the time being, and move to Skyway Church property. Kevin?
We have had a request from M Pharma, used to be M Brex. Scotland County owns just under one acre of land that is surrounded by their property. It was acquired by Scotland County as part of their original incentive. There was some type of contamination in the environmental study, so it was not transferred when the rest of it was transferred, since...
Thank you.
They have come back in, and they have requested that we transfer it, because they, they've been using it as unpaid parking, and they want to own it and use the, to use that property. This is very similar to the small piece of land that we wound up maintaining at FCC because of a car battery was buried there. So, but they have made an offer to buy the land for $2,500.
I'm looking at the tax value, and the tax value is $19,000?
Yes, because it was looking at the, the land, all around it is also that. So it's valued at the industrial value. And that's why we put in there that if they're going to do that, we would require, I would, I would say that we would need it as part of a evaluate, have it appraised. Now, with this, this was land that Scotland County kept at M Brex's request because of contamination when we gave them the land as part of an incentive package. So, what does that show?
I, I just thought that there was a huge difference between that. If it's not worth $19,000, and they're going to come back and phrase it too.
And the only reason why it would be is because it's less than one acre, completely surrounded by another one. It's a value to them, but it's not a value to anyone else.
John, you got any problem with it?
No.
All right. What's the pleasure? We need to...
I think the motion is to sell that parcel to M Pharma for $500.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that.
So with that, we're assuming the motion is to surplus the property and accept the first bid, and we will do an advertised upset bid, bringing back at the October meeting for final approval.
Okay.
Is that what I said?
That's exactly what you said. I have a mask on, it's hard to hear.
All right. James Street, Kevin?
Okay. This is the property across the street from the jail. We talked about last month, I did reach out to the owner, made the offer of $25,000 to the, for the purchase of it. They came back with a counter of $30,000, which was the expected counter. So I'm bringing that back to the board with recommendation that we go ahead, honestly, without one project. But that is, that is the, you know, that's the current value, or that's the current counter that we had on the paper. And if we went ahead and purchased that, we could go ahead and have Public Public Works crew come in and demolish the structure very quickly.
All right. Need a motion, one way or the other.
I'm moving it first.
I have a motion that we purchased it for $30,000.
Second.
And I have a second.
Did he say 30 or 35?
30.
30.
30.
All in favor, let it be known we're saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that. All right.
The Health Department was going to be here, or was going to be online, but the Health Director had a situation come up that she was not able to attend. But you do have a written report from the Health Department coming in. One of the significant things on here, you will see a, an uptick in the number of cases Scotland County has had in the last, a significant uptick. A lot of those are through Scotland Correctional. The majority of our cases are actually there. The majority of our cases are actually there, and part of that is also because they are also bringing in patients in and out because that is also a dialysis center for prison system. So that is still a, the vast majority of our active cases are either people confined or people working at Scotland Correctional. So until we actually get a vaccine, we're not going to hit a saturation point where we're going to see a decline in numbers anytime soon anyway. It's just the way it's going.
It's Scotland direction, saying this coming from Robinson County.
They're moving me.
Yeah, sorry, they're moving me.
They're moving them in from all over the state.
So, and of course, when you have a thousand people who basically live, eat, work together, one person gets sick, a lot of people get sick.
Okay, all right.
Laurel Hill Community Center, plans are changing a little bit with this. We did have a bid, we did have the RFQs coming in from four different companies for architectural services doing a site plan for the Laurel Hill Community Center. The four companies are Pinnacle Architecture, Locklear, Locklear Jacobs, Oakley Collier, and Stogner Architecture. We have had dealings with each of these companies, well, the county has had, was on dealings with each of these companies. Pinnacle, they've been involved in several of the school projects recently. Each of the four companies are qualified and capable of doing the job. The original intent was, because this came in Friday at 2:00, we did not have opportunity to sit down and go off and do a full assessment on these, or expecting to go off and recess till later till next week and being able to come back with a full recommendation. But with that, you know, honestly, all four of these companies could easily do the job. None of them, none of them are from Scotland County. Stogner is Richmond County, Locklear, Locklear and Jacobs, they are Robinson County. Pinnacle is Cumberland County, or that is one of their offices, I believe. And Oakley Collier, they are Rocky Mount, though they have multiple offices in that state as well.
So what you opened on Friday were?
We just received the bids by a 2:00 deadline.
Okay, and so we didn't have an opportunity because of everything else going on to have that ready for the night?
Right, we just did not go through and we were going to look at them and try to rank and determine, come back in with a recommendation.
I guess I would hate to see us have to wait four weeks before we make that award. Is, can we do it without us being together, or do we, can we recess this to whatever time you think you're going to be able to come back with that recommendation?
We can come back in.
That's a month long.
Yeah. You can recess, I already had plans to recess till next week anyway, so you can do that, or you can authorize me to engage one of these companies and notify you of the selection process for the pre-bid.
I'd say that's a good idea, I mean, that we can trust your judgment.
Would we have to go with a low bid?
These, this is not a bid, this is a qualification.
Okay.
And you've worked with most of they have.
I've worked with all of them except Pinnacle, the school systems have worked with Pinnacle, and they're satisfied with Pinnacle, so.
I'm sorry, there?
The school system is satisfied with Pinnacle. I've had active projects with Locklear and Jacobs and with Stogner.
Who's the capital committee? Or the?
We are, me and Bob and.
Do y'all make decisions in regard to properties and building stuff and repairing stuff?
They make recommend.
Yeah.
You are now.
I thought you was on the capital committee.
It's been a while since that group's met.
Been so long since we've met, you forget.
Never been.
Lost somebody, somebody's gone.
They do make recommend, they don't make decisions, but they make recommend.
We assume that you took your place, but we've not met since then.
Well, maybe that's for our group, but I.
I think that's a good idea.
If, if you would like to do that, rather than having the full board meet again, we could go off and you could, for this situation, authorize me to execute an agreement with consulting with the capital committee.
Is there, I make that, I make that motion.
You've got a lot of information from each one of them according to the paperwork, right?
Yes.
They sent a part of information, so you've got a lot of information from each one, where they're working, they're trying to.
I'm telling you, I'm making the decision, I just don't know if that's fair to him.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
And the motion is for capital committee to meet.
Right, with Kevin and.
Kevin, the motion was for Kevin to make a recommendation to the capital committee, and if they agree with the recommendations, that's to go forward at that point.
Heard the motion and the second. All in favor, let it be known, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those like. Okay.
And I would hope that that decision that we made.
Next week, next week, because we need to get moving on that.
Okay, I was thinking we'd probably try to hopefully meet Thursday, Thursday, Friday of this week, or the first of next week.
Next week, because I can't meet this week.
I can.
Okay, next week then.
Two days already.
Okay. We do have a request that came in from the school system. They, the South Johnson School is coming in, finalizing under budget. We have not paid out, we have not done a final accounting on it because we still have some plies, some equipment that's being purchased. I just authorized a purchase for playground equipment last week. So we, so finance cannot tell me what the absolute final number is, but the school system is requesting the use of the contingency funds that are available for the construction of a multipurpose building that would be out at the high school. They would primarily be using it for their JARC OTC program.
So when do you think that we should be waiting, everything is finished financially, budget wise, before we go on and say, hey, look, go on, should we go on and agree with?
Right now, this would be an easy opportunity to go off and say, yes, you're supportive or you're against the proposal, but we will not have a final dollar until probably the October, October meeting anyway. But this would advise the school whether or not you're favorable on it before we have the final number.
I feel they got the money, go for it, I mean, they can afford to do it, I think the purpose for which they're doing it is good.
But no county funds would be added to, and I think that's what that is getting to.
Correct. These would be bronze proceeds that were originally slated to go for the construction of South Johnson School.
And I'm sorry, I think they, we don't have any idea how much money we're talking about.
I don't have, I don't have a, a final number to give you, they didn't give an estimate, and I'm not sure what. The number that we have as a remainder is going to change. So until we get all, we make sure that we have all the invoices in.
They've got $500,000 left.
That's what I'm.
I've got a different opinion.
Yeah.
They've got $35,000 and they can build what they're doing for that, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, there, maybe not to exceed a dollar amount, I don't know.
And they did not submit, they submitted their drawings, but they did not submit the cost estimate, and that can be something I can easily push back to them asking for their cost estimate.
I'd like to see us do that. Find out, I'm like, how much money they talking about.
I'm proud of them that came in under budget, but I don't think that necessarily means to get.
Spend all of it. Okay, well.
We'll get more information, and hopefully we'll be able to be in a position where we can close out the other accounting on it as well.
Okay. Historic Property, Historic Properties, Carol?
Since nobody can hear me, the reason this is being brought to you, five, six years ago, the Historic Properties Commission came before the board commissioner and asked for an alcohol policy so that events at John Booth grounds or at Historic Properties, that the sale and consumption of beer and wine would be allowed. It has come to the attention of Historic Properties that with weddings being held there, and there is an application for a very large wedding to be held there in October, COVID will determine the final outcome of that, but that, both that application has indicated they wanted to serve, I guess what you call hard liquor, down the way I have to put it. And we know that there are both the weddings that are held there, small and large, so the board felt like they needed to have their policy revised to include the sale or and/or consumption of beer, wine, and spirit in their alcohol policy. So the policy was forwarded to Mr. Johnson for his review and his recommendation and what he felt like was appropriate for us to adopt this policy. I'm going to take your attention to rules for the use and or sale of alcohol. And what Mr. Johnson did in the policy was really he bears the responsibility of all this on the renter and not Historic Properties. He also requires a $1 million alcohol liquor rider for any event that has over 200 people so that they would be liable for any thing that would create an issue and that they would be responsible for that. So this just spells out all the conditions and permitting that has to be done for any private or public event to have something at John Booth grounds and have beer, wine, and parlor. Tim, you want to add to that? You've been part of that conversation?
You pretty well covered it, I mean, I think one thing that he did add in there is I think it's all on them to get their one special permit and all that good stuff, but the, the one thing he added in there that they had to be an off-duty.
Yes.
Police officer hired and be there and paid by the group during the time they're doing it, so.
And then also, if the group is really, really large, Historic Properties has the ability to increase it from one off-duty officer to two or three, depending on how large the group is. But that is, that is new in the policy.
I didn't read all of it, well, I read, I guess I did read it, but I didn't notice in there if there's any damage, would the renter be responsible for repairing? Is it in there?
Well, that's in the general rental, yeah, that's, this is just on the alcohol.
This is just alcohol, okay.
They have to have the responsibility for that.
So this is for your consideration tonight. If you have any questions, I'll answer them, but Ed did go through it, and this is what he deemed as appropriate for our needs in order to have.
So Ed did pass on it?
Yes, he did give a pass on that.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I will make a motion that we approve the Scotland County Historic Properties Commission alcohol policy.
I heard a motion, have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those like.
I don't have any comment about the policy that I think the, you got, if there's not a, I don't, you need to also add a few acknowledges against sort of people. You got these policies, I don't have any comments.
You do two applications, but I'll make that.
I think it's good, that would, you have to.
Lords and committees.
Okay.
We do have three individuals to be appointed and reappointed to the library and board of directors, Mrs. Powell Bethel, Ms. Philistine Edward, and Ms. Carol Gaskell, and all applies to be appointed or reappointed to the library and board of directors, so I will make that motion to two of them, three individuals.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Those like.
Clarence had a question.
Are there term limits?
We're fortunate to get people to serve.
No, 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 is there term limits? That's a question.
I'm not sure, I'll be honest.
Can you fire up that deficit? We're not going to serve, we didn't give nobody, didn't count it, opportunity to serve. It's term limits, you got to do it, you do all of it.
That is true, but every time you want to come up, they want to come back again and again and again, so.
I'll get an answer to this question, it's a good question, but let me put one back to you, if we have term limits and they can't be reappointed and nobody applies, we end up with empty boards. I know.
Only you put it out there, they.
Well, there are some that are more problematic.
We've got that problem on our.
We got to be fair.
From what I remember, we do have a policy that is basically two, unless there's not applying for a commissioner, a commissioner being appointed to a board. There is a two-term limit, assuming there is someone who, assuming there is someone else who has applied. So if it has been a situation where there is no other application, that's been there, and also if there are certain positions such as like the board of health, where there are very specific requirements, there has to be an applicant that would meet those requirements to do that. But yes, we do have term limits.
What about on this note, Kevin? Apply. Yeah, what about on this, this particular, when you're.
Yeah, I'm sure there is.
That is.
The library, there are term limits on all of them.
Those are the guidelines that the board.
I see it, I know.
Are all these reappointed?
Two, it looks like two is, one is new, two is reappointed.
Yeah.
And this is a board that I know librarian has actually had significant difficulty in just getting people to a meeting.
Yeah.
Patterson's question there, could we just flip ahead with the one new person and then look at the rules for the others?
We just don't have application.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we got problems with people, nobody.
And, and we do have that problem in a number of.
You're going to have the same problem with the health board, because that's four proceeds coming up. I think there's one person that has said they would like to be reappointed.
You got on Historic Properties, getting people to serve, and we, you know, month after month, and we, we've worked hard and we got our board filled, but unfortunately, the same people still won't serve, we don't get any applicants, and. the same people still won't serve. We don't get any applicants and, um, first record done well and getting new applicants, we got one board that's not, so. I was gonna, whatever position we have.
I think as commissioners, we have worked harder, definitely talking about myself. I've called people, asked them, there's several boards, and we just don't have to create more interest among the populace, you know, population of people. They just don't seem, maybe the way we're doing is not good enough, you know, but I suggest we go and use all three of this fine and, uh, go and fill his board and then we certainly will take a harder look at people that have served long-term from now on.
Alright, so there's.
What is it saying in here? As your term is up, you have to seek, can't, you only have to seek for a real, real partner. You can't be. I'm saying, I just wanna be fair to anybody else. We gotta make this.
It probably says it is a vow, but it must not.
See, there's volunteers. If nobody volunteers, then that's what we can do. And what's, what's happened to us in Scottsdale County is that we're aging and there are not new people, um, coming into government and willing to serve on the boards I serve on. We have to postpone meetings because we are, that in Council of Development, we are all seniors serving, we're all seniors, okay? Everybody on the board. And, uh, you can't get replacement. We have to postpone meetings. We can't get a four. So.
Alright.
The chances coming from, we need to find something, but.
Well, this is something we need to talk about and I've been trying ways that we can try to.
Alright, the motion was then is you're gonna reappoint Kyle Bethel, Phyllis Edwards, and Carol Gaskell to the Scottsdale County Memorial Library Board. We had a motion. Carol made that motion. Had a second. All in favor, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
Hold like sign. Okay. Alright, Kevin?
Alright, uh, Sneed's Go Convenience Site finally reopened. Uh, and, uh, even before, uh, the day after, or the first day it was open, I went by there. We specifically did not advertise it, uh, so when I walked there, when I was there and wound up talking with somebody for about forty-five minutes, there were only about five cars that came through unloading stuff. So, uh, it is open, uh, there. Uh, we will be looking at replacing the compactors at the Wagram and the Palmer Road Sites. Uh, they have been ordered. Uh, once they come in, we will remove the compactors, replace the existing contract, concrete, put them back in. It will probably take about a week to ten days on each site to get that done, concrete cured and everything. The sites will remain open. They will not have a compactor for that period of time. It will be basically using a roll-off bin, but the sites will remain open.
Can I ask you a question while you're on convenience sites?
Yes.
It has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
What in the world is going on about this cat you're calling about? I don't even know which one it's at, but it's the one he's.
There's what now?
A cat.
A cat, yeah.
I'm talking about.
Have you heard about the cat?
Yes, I've heard about the cat.
I know about.
Um.
You're talking about a cat that had rabies?
No, no, he's been vaccinated. Which side does it come out of?
Livingston.
And there's one that stays at Livingston Quarter all the time.
That's the one you're talking about. And, and somebody apparently has gotten word that they're gonna take the cat away from there. And he's been big, he's been, uh, anyway, I just, I didn't know there's somebody.
But one of, one of the guard, I, I started having a conversation with somebody, uh, from Public Works. They were asking me about it. I had no, I was going in a completely different direction than they were, but ultimately one of the guards who works there ultimately has a pet cat that he keeps on site.
The cat causing a problem?
No, more than anything else, but basically.
Don't worry about it.
Uh, and so basically, we don't bring pets to work. Uh.
And that was, I was, I've literally got no cause about that. I got about that so many.
That is sad.
I mean, I got.
Stand for a minute. Sorry, I got cat.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I worried about.
I said, stand.
I couldn't even get out of which side it was, but I'm sorry. I didn't, I just thought that was a good place.
Yeah.
Talking about cats, there's been a rabies case in, in the county.
Well, yeah, but that cat's been vaccinated.
Yeah, I know. Belongs to, belongs to the First Sergeant.
Yeah. That, that cat is basically, it's a pet that lets roam into, roam after dark because the guy can't take it home.
Alright.
Uh, complex, uh, parking lot actually opened today. Uh, so, uh, the complex parking is finished. Uh, the monument committee, uh, did get, uh, Dr. Uh, well, Bill Loftus, a number of you may know him.
Who's that?
Uh, from St. Andrews.
Bill Loftus.
O F T U S.
He has agreed to act as facilitator for the monument committee.
L O F T U S.
Um, and, uh, so we're working now to schedule a meeting with him and the chairman so they can create, get their organizational meeting so they can start the actual meetings for the monument committee. Uh, and because part of it, as I discussed with, uh, Dr. Loftus, was that we needed a facilitator because I did not want to sit back and try to run that meeting, uh, because it needed to be, that committee needed to stand on itself. The county will facilitate, or I mean, will, will provide resources as needed, but the committee would operate on its own, uh, and then come back with a recommendation to this.
I think it's very smart move, Kev. Very smart move. So many people, do I do, Bob, I'll say what yours I do.
I'll give it to him. Uh, the radio tower, uh, it, the radio tower, uh, all the radios have been switched over. They are now broadcasting off of the new tower. Uh, they are looking to schedule the removal of the old tower, so currently both of them are out there. And we are currently in discussions with City Alarmburg about moving a auxiliary repeater to the water tower by, uh, the EDC building where, that, on the north side of Alarmburg. The fire department has a fire repeater on it and they get, and they were getting excellent reception in the north end of the county, according to them, uh, before the new tower went up and was operational. So that is just something else we are looking to consider, we are working on now in addition to the new tower. Uh, the new tower final switch over was within the last ten days, so we'll be getting more information as to exactly what all the total benefits are going to be.
What's that man's name?
Uh, the last item was, we were, uh, requested by the chair, um, following the letter from the NAACP, uh, so we requested to come up with a draft resolution, uh, dealing with diversity and tolerance, uh, the language that, uh, we were able, that we were, we assembled languages from resolutions from the state and from other local governmental organizations to go off and deal directly with statement of, uh, tolerance and, uh, civil, uh, civic dignity, basically, uh.
Trying to find it. Where is it? Oh, you guys just don't know what I do.
Alright, you seen the draft? Had a copy in your packet. Any discussion on it?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the flag and anyone reading that won't know what it's, what it's talking about.
Okay.
When you say diversity, tolerance to be celebrated and practiced each and every day by citizens, the issue before us has had, had nothing to do with citizens. Am I correct?
Well, I, I.
We need to face this head on and not.
It's kind of, yeah, it is kind of general, you know, but.
That's saying citizens. This was not brought by citizens. We're talking about the general population. Now, why wasn't brought by citizens? Why, who brought to our attention? And if he's a citizen? You missed my point.
Well, he's saying that it's not.
Let me speak, I can speak for myself, and then I can speak for yourself. I just salute this flag and I conclude by saying liberty and justice for all. And I, I believe in addressing an issue not going around. The issue we have here, the statement that was made concerned a news, that's our citizens. And, uh, here's what I would recommend to the board. That we look at our policy as it relates to our oath of office. I swore, I put my hands on the Bible, some affirm that we would uphold the Constitution of these United States of America and that we wouldn't do anything that consists of there was. Am I correct?
You're correct.
That's our oath of office. To correct this, the Board of Commissioners, in my opinion, should redo its policies as it reduce, as it relates to the appointment to boards and committees. Anyone serving at our pleasure, not elected, what has to do with elected folks. Anyone serving at our pleasure would have to uphold our oath of office because they're doing a service to this county that we would otherwise be doing. Therefore, our oath of office is in place, we have to uphold that. So if they say or do anything that consists of there are, we are responsible because we placed them there. So what I would suggest is that our policy is updated to say anyone who does that disqualifies himself or herself because of race, creed, or color from serving on board or committee because you have violated our oath of office. If you say you would provide a tree or a news, that is vigilante justice. We just salute the flag by saying liberty and justice for all, and that's under the law. So for us to be true to our oath of office, we have to do that, otherwise this is not addressing the issue and it's not gonna satisfy the public.
Well, I second.
And probably nothing will satisfy us because that's not what we about. We about serving as best we can. But that's what I would recommend to the board.
Should that become a motion?
Ah.
Question.
That's what I'm recommending, but.
What are you?
This draft, hold up, Kevin dropped a Jason. This draft written up, what purpose? Why would this, why did this even come to the table tonight?
Well, we were asked by the NAACP.
Right.
Because of.
Well, it, it includes boards, it includes of commissioners, but this is all down in dress there. I got a little.
Well, if, uh, the only reason that I think that, that I asked Kevin to do there is to prevent hopefully something like this from happening again. Uh, I've got no control over this. What's happened has happened. There's nothing we can do about it. But if we could put something in place that says to each commissioner, this is taboo. You know, I'm not into social media and all that mess. I could care less about social media, but that was my intent, just keep it from happening again, if, if we could.
But he's saying that this doesn't address.
Keeping it from happening again.
He said this really doesn't address.
That's why.
You can keep it from happening.
That's why it's a draft. I mean, it.
We can't keep it from happening again.
No.
All the thing we can do is, is as legislative officials is just say that.
Well, do you wanna send it to the?
We, we, we won't tolerate.
Well, do you wanna send it to the policy committee and let them come up with a policy?
Yes, that's what he's suggesting.
Okay, well, that's.
Want to address.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I.
And if, and if the board doesn't accept whatever recommendation, then we done with.
I mean, that, you know, that's fine with me. I don't have a problem with it.
Well, um, I think that John is correct. If we tolerate this, you know, on our Board of Commissioners, we are not being true to our own oath. And, and, uh, and we going, and when the NAACP asks us, well, what happened? Oh, we wrote this, you know, I think the person that did it did a good job in, in providing us a resolution, but it doesn't necessarily speak to the issue. You see what I'm saying? What we're saying?
That's normal.
And, and they gonna look at this and say, well, this is a beautiful thing that y'all got a great philosophy of being commissioners, but this doesn't really say, you know, whatever. But.
Band-aid them. That's why we don't put the band-aid.
But I'm gonna say this, and, uh, Commissioner Ivey, uh, when I read, when it was read to me on the phone, uh, your comments were very disturbing and very painful. And, uh, it could be that I'm a black American and I was born and raised in, in segregated Jim Crow South and, uh, and the cruel experiences shared with me by parents, grandparents, or whatever, and, and, and the history itself made your comments horrible and dehumanized. And, uh, I, I, I was really disappointed. And so it may be that you may not be familiar so much with, with the history of our people. And I would suggest that maybe you can do some study, investigating, read up on some of the struggles that we have experienced as people, and you understand why we feel that way. Me and John and Clarence feel, well, Clarence didn't say anything, but I said, I said, John, I feel that way because we've been there and done that. I've been scared in my life. You see what I'm saying? And when my parents tell me about the KKK coming at night, it was scary as a child. So this is why we, it's not that we dislike you or trying to hurt you, but this is what I express have been. And I, I, my John's bravery in saying this.
Well, I, you know, you know what? And I agree with you, and you know that. We've talked a thousand times.
I love you, guys.
And, and, but I'm gonna be honest with you, and I'm stepping outside of the role of, of being on the front end of this issue and, and looking at the back end of the issue. This is weak as branch water, and I don't know how else to say it because I don't think it answers what they're saying. But with that said, and what Ms. Goldson said, when, when I posted what I posted that day, I was, I was, it had, it had nothing to do about any kind of race or anything. It had to do about execution of a five-year-old child. Two days later, it happened in Somerville, South Carolina, to a, to a young five-year-old child down there, one in Raleigh, and, and, you know, it's just.
Why would you go outside the law? No, we got a law to take that.
I didn't, well, I didn't, I didn't say go outside the law, and I never said go around to due process. I never, everybody has put that in there, but I haven't said. I never, everybody has put that in there, but I haven't said. So, you know, but I agree with you, I agree with you, but that was a huge, oh, I'm tired of seeing, and, and whatever it takes for us to stop it happening, then we need to do it. We don't, we're part of the problem. But now, that only press, that only press that. And this is, oh, what I'm saying is, I recall when the young man went into the church and something, chopped and he was shot, rallying people at church and killed. When the police arrested him, he woke him up, said he was hungry, and that police took him to their dogs and bought him some food. I know that everybody can't act like that, but that's the way he should be. Even though he had committed these crimes, this is America. He has to be treated as an American, and he was. And we want to see the same thing extended to everybody who breaks the law. They should be tried in the streets. And I know how passionate we feel about anybody being shot. I feel the same way, but we can't say that because it's a violation of our oath. That's called vigilante justice, and that's unconstitutional, and that's what I'm addressing. I know in the heat of the moment, we'll say things, but as elected officials, we have to uphold our oath of office. We swear that we won't do any, or say, we uphold the Constitution. And vigilante justice is unconstitutional. Therefore, as elected official, I cannot say you are hanging. That's outside of the law. I mean, I feel that. I understand.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
I follow your thought process.
Yeah.
And, and, but I never, never said anything about going outside of, of due process or anything. I'm just saying
But when you said
I'm trying to make a point of, if we don't stop these five-year-old children from getting executed, executed, then shame on everybody.
But what are you gonna say to
That, 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 I don't say this one thing, or that I won't say I'm through, just got to go hungry. But when an elected official suggests or states in any way that someone should be hanged, when we, that flame, the fire of other folk, they are carrying out, that's what's happening as I speak right now. I feel that, I love the guy, everybody, I love him. But he flames the fire by saying certain things, then he'll come back and say, well, I, I didn't say that. Which we've seen vigilante justice carried out in the streets and other places. They're burning up people's buildings and then killing people. And Tim, when you said I'll provide the tree, that's outside of the law. And I know you, you're a good man, you're a good man. And, but that's where the problem come in. You provided, you said you would provide the tree, if other guy would have provided the noose. That's vigilante justice, that's unconstitutional. And I don't believe he meant that. And maybe you did, you said, you know, this gotta stop, but it can't stop with lawlessness. My granddaddy witnessed a hanging in Dillon, in Dennisville, South Carolina. He died at age of seven, so it ain't been a long time ago that he shared that story with me. And that's bad.
There were too many homes in, in, was it North Carolina? The back year, first year.
He, he, he witnessed that, he shared with me what that meant to him. So I'm just saying, no matter how passionate we feel about what's going on, we cannot go outside the law, even casually, as elected officials, because others follow us. They do follow us, they believe in us, and they care about us. And I want to say this to my friend Tim, this doesn't change how I feel about him on this. I think with the mistake we made here, I feel like nothing will change.
Well, let me say this, this draft came from, most of it, from the school of government. So, I mean, there's, you know, that's, that's basically what, but my intent was to send this along with whatever else to the Policy Committee and come up with a policy that would address the social media. Social media, to me, is one of the worst things that ever happened. Now, people love it to death, but
I agree with you.
But I, I, maybe, maybe, it's probably me because I ain't smart enough to know how to use it, but it
But, yeah, it's, it's, it's an opportunity for people to express themselves and, but as, as you said, and I, John kept talking, so he said some very good things, but as kind of commissioners, I don't go on it because I'm afraid that I'll say something that will conflict with some of the information that goes on in our meeting, or we'll get, end up in a conversation with somebody and, and come out with something you don't need to come out with, so I don't go to social media. And my family laughs at me in a way, some of them do, by not doing it, but I don't. Can we go home?
Yeah, yeah, we can. We ain't gonna be the one praying here, now.
Well, he knows that we're like him. Tim knows that, but Tim would figure out how you
I think they deserve an answer. I think they deserve an answer.
But I think you need to apologize to somebody, Tim, I'm honest with you.
You know, maybe that answer is word for word what John said, I don't know. Um, but, uh, I, I'm telling you, I just can't
It's bad out there, Tim, it's bad.
It's bad out there, Tim, but what are you gonna do with N W A C P? Are you gonna apologize?
No.
Okay.
Because
Okay, if you apologize, if you say you're not gonna apologize, nothing to say.
I grew up in Scotland County, all my life, for me, all my life. I was raised by an undereducated black woman. She taught me one thing. She taught me not to hate, love everybody. I would keep that, I just keep that, I just give it to my children. I'm thinking about it. When I see stuff like riots in other towns, I'd be hoping it don't come Scotland County because that's not what I'm about. I'm not about that. I won't, I won't express that to anybody. I feel, if I hate somebody, I keep it in my heart, I won't keep it in my heart, I won't be here, but I, I'll take it out, you know. I would just deceive for killers.
Right, I agree with that.
But it, it just, ain't no place, I don't see a place with Scotland County, because I know what, I gave up in Man, I consider Man hot, now they call it, be, you know, opportunities is that, I gave it up to come back, you know, and be productive in my town. All friends of mine go out, better jobs, whatever, make the money, they, what do they call it, make you live in the American dream. But I gave it up to come back Scotland County to be productive in my hometown. So when they come back, I would say, hey, man, we could do the same thing you're doing in Atlanta, doing in D C. But that's why I came back here, and I want, I'm, I want to be protected, be productive in my community. But North Carolina, I hate to see that rioting, but, you know, even the Black Matters statement and words and language, you know, all lies about me. They're all lies about me because I, I don't look at people that way. I deal with death and see it, and I'm, I'm working with it and everything, but I didn't choose that profession, God chose me. I tell anybody, this here is something I chose, you know, that profession, the people chose, you know. People don't, you know, take it away from me, but God chose a profession for me, and it's not, I don't see that, you know, I, I just can't feel part of taking, you know, thinking takes somebody's life, you know, that.
Well, I think each one of us, Clarence, has, as commissioners, are looked at and held to a different standard than the average citizen walking down the street.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they look to us for guidance and, and that kind of stuff, and I, I've been here for 12 years and I feel like I've made a contribution, and it, it just, it breaks my heart to see the diversity that's coming in our community. It, it didn't used to be that way.
Diversity, I agree.
John, John and I
We have two commissioners have not spoken, I'd like to hear what they say.
This time people say it, I'm getting tired.
Well, let me just, I think the crime that was committed was undoubtedly hanged, reprehensible in every way that we can imagine, but I do believe that words matter. And what I would say is that, Tim, if you had said, put him away where the sun don't shine, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation. If you had said lock him up and draw away the king, that would've been the end of it. If you had said, this is why I support capital punishment, nobody would've had a question about anything that you had said. But words matter, and when you were issued, when words are like hanging in a tree, that does speak to the history of vigilante justice, which is unlawful, which is what we have to be mindful of as elected officials. But therefore, there's, there's the two issues. There's the race issue that can be perceived what you said, and then there's the unlawful issue, and we have to balance them out, and that's what I have struggled with since this whole issue came about. And I do think that we've, we've been asked to make a response to the N W A C P. A very eloquent letter was sent to us, and they did not inflame the situation, they did not use race in their letter, they talked about our community and being united, so I think it
Very nice level.
I think that we are bound to respond to them in a way that was appropriate. So is it most to come to the Policy Committee for us to look at this draft and see how we need to make it something that we all agree on? I think that's the way to go.
Well, one correction, and that's taken care of. The letter from the N W A C P did bring the race issue. They did say an African-American man and a Caucasian child, I did not bring that. When I posted that, I didn't even know that.
Well, I'm
And so, but they, I'm making that correction. Now, that was not brought in by me, so
Reception is.
But when you talk about hanging and a tree, that doesn't, in my mind, as they're all constantly, you're not leaving much doubt as to what it is, and it's unlawful, whether you're hanging, no matter who it is that's being hung, it is unlawful to talk that way. So like I said, if you had said, leave him away for life, okay. So I just think that, you know, for us to respond and maybe listen to what John has to say, maybe at least you come to the Policy Committee, if that's what consensus is for all.
We didn't hear from you, Whit.
Well, I, I have wrestled with this a good bit, very honestly, and I actually wrote down some stuff to say, but I don't think that's what I'm gonna do. I felt like, I've tried, and the older I get and the, the more I tend to increase my faith, I don't really believe it's my right or what God intends me to do to judge, character of the gentleman sitting beside me. When I heard it, when, when I saw what was written, I was disappointed because I thought it would be perceived as with racial undertones. And I was disappointed because I've not known Tim long, but I've not seen anything indicative of that from him. And so I, I, I choose to believe it was, that what the comment was just made, that excuse it, it just means that it was an intentional act of, of racism. But also believe, and, and that, that our community, we have a, the comment that Bob said a minute ago, and you used the word diversity, I think you may have been speaking of divisiveness.
Divisive, I understand diversity.
What I see in our country is everybody trying to drive wedges and throw rocks, when I think that most of us in this room generally like to build bridges. We have a great community here, we've had good leaders that are African-American, that are white, that are Indian in this community, we've had, I mean, in all of the boards, the school system, county commissioners, city landlord, chief of police, chairman of the county commissioners, we've had great diversity in all of these positions. And what bothers me some is that we get caught up in some things, when we've got an opportunity in this country right now because I think there is an appreciation of the disadvantage that minorities have had for a long time. I heard a sportscaster this weekend, and he said, this isn't gonna change until the people who aren't impacted by it are just as offended as the ones who are. And I think we're closer to that in this country than maybe we've ever been.
Well, I tell you
So I hope, if, if it may be a discrepancy, I hope that this, that this conversation will lead to greater appreciation of what we say and the impact it has on others. And, and maybe what we need to do, and because I do think, Tim's point, I pretend that I was great when he made it, this draft is like
It's like water.
It's just, it's not, it's not, it's not sufficient.
This draft
And I think what we need to do is, yeah, we, what I would suggest, and this I think
But it's, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say
Is you guys in the Policy Committee, for, and, for if we're gonna do a resolution, it needs to be stronger, and it needs to be permanent, and it needs to be not a, not, not, not resolution, but a policy
Well, I think it ought to be a policy, and I think it ought to be And I, I think it ought
Well, that's my simple, I said about it, if, if, if you get my role in this whole thing, if I were the N W A C P, that don't satisfy my letter. And you do what you want from there, but I mean, I wouldn't be happy with that either.
You mentioned the unrest is the side of the day. You have to, you may not understand that there are people in this country, now, longer Scotland County is a wonderful place to live, but racism still exists here in Scotland County. People have certainly have not been treated fairly. And for the first time in the history of man in, in the United States, why other races are seeing how the, the black race has been treated through all these 400 years, and they decided to march for justice. So I'm proud of the marching, I'm proud of the protesting, for once in our lives, we got some help. The Jordan List of the world now has some help, and that help is a white man. He sees injustice, so we can close our eyes and say, oh, Scotland County is the most beautiful place in the world, everybody's treated fair and just. That ain't exactly right.
Maybe I'm a report system of 30 years.
But you say, you know, y'all, Scotland County is a wonderful place to live, but we have issues here too. And you have to understand, we do have issues here.
I understand that, I believe that, I believe it every day, but also believe we have the ability to deal with those.
But admit the, yeah, but we have to admit that there is a problem for, you know, that's already
There is a problem, but I, and I hope, I hope with the Policy Committee, that, and I don't know how you could do it, whether it be strong enough, but there ought to be something in that policy that says if you do thus and so, that you violate your code or your oath of office, then you ought to resign. I mean, that's just, that's the way I feel about it.
That's on the committee, I'm full of that, so
And I have some, right, Tim, the exact same words you gave.
I mean, I, I feel that, and I'm not, I'm not talking about, I'm just
Chairman, I do think that if we're going to refer this to the Policy Committee or, or whatever action, that it is appropriate for you as the chairman to write to Mr. Dyson
I will.
And, and tell him about this discussion, and that we felt like what we intended to do or planned to do was not sufficient response to his letter.
I will, I, I talked to Herman, I
But I did.
Any, any, any of you online?
Hmm.
Are we still online?
Yeah.
Are we still out on the line, Kevin? Yeah, we are.
But, but I still think his letter was appropriate, right, and we needed, and we needed a grim response to that, right? I understand.
I, I will do that. Lord's willing and the creek don't rise.
It keeps raining, it's gonna rise, it's supposed to rain, I'm not gonna
I know it.
Do, do we need a motion to refer this to the Policy Committee or just by consensus?
Let's make a motion.
So we'll have it in the record book if we.
Make your motion, John.
Hold it, this, this issue be referred to the policy committee, and the policy committee will make the recommendation back to the board.
Motion, have a second. All in favor, let everybody know, saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, okay.
Motion, Chairman said. Can, or will you get with me on this Capitol Committee whenever you want?
Right.
Actually, y'all can adjourn.
No, we're not gonna reach this. We're gonna, we're gonna, no, we're gonna adjourn because we were, because what we were gonna reach this to has been moved to our next meeting. So I guess we've all had our county commissioners' news, and nobody else has anything else they had, or do you, anybody?
I saved, I, I saved my report, do I have my, my mental energy? I don't have any tonight.
I have, I have five seconds. Hey, January 5th, where I told y'all I attended a wonderful birthday party, prefered through Ingram, who is 100 years old. I am sad to report that she died the last couple.
She did.
She married my Christian mother.
She did, sir.
That, that is awesome, one, one.
She was a member of Saddle Rock.
She was 100 years old.
100 years old.
Then before her, this, uh, Old Bill Parsons was 104 years. I had, I bought my American.
Did you, did you, Miss Kirk?
Yep.
Both of them had a park racing.
Yeah.
They would race me.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I found my, one of my best friends, um, is, is a 100-year-old, you know, if you see her driving.
Yeah, we want to adjourn. John's already made a motion, a second. All in favor, let everybody know, saying aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all.